Okay, good evening. The date is August 4th, 2025, and the time is 6:03. I hereby call the workshop of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida to order. Sierra, would you please take the role?
Mayor, please.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Amy J. Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Feig.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Radzick.
Here.
City Manager Mike Hine.
Here.
City Attorney Anita Girasi Carver.
Here.
Sergeant-at-Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
Here.
City Clerk Virginia Wright here.
In the Groveland Police Department Communications Consolidation. Mr. Hine?
Yeah, good evening. Good evening. Members of the council, thank you for having this workshop to discuss a vital issue that has been discussed for the last several years and has been presented as an option for this upcoming budget, specifically the transfer of dispatch services from the city to Lake County Sheriff's Office. Tonight, I've asked Chief Ramsey to give an overview, and a couple weeks ago, I forwarded to you a request from some of the supervisors in dispatch to also have an opportunity to present to mayor and council. So we'll do that this evening. So, Chief Ramsey?
Excuse me, Chief, before you...
Mr. Radzick's microphone is not working. If somebody can come and take a look at it. Please.
Good evening.
What did you do?
All right, I'm here to please...
I did that, too.
So, could you...
...throughout the, there we go, test, test. So I'm here to talk to you about a matter that's come up. It comes up each and every, ooh, it's almost overwhelming now. It comes up each and every physical year during budget time, reference to our dispatch, dispatch services, the cost of what our dispatch services are. So we've been compiling information throughout the years now, one, to just support what these individuals do daily. Number-wise, you see that in the war report, which you review every two weeks. And we put together a few forms of communication that we've had with the sheriff's office in preparation for this discussion, just so we could all get on the same page and we could all talk about something intelligently, instead of just shooting in the dark, having some good conversations with the county to see what, A, our expectations would be in such a case, and what, B, what deliverables they would have in such a situation. So if you look at the first page here of the memos that were in front of you, we talk about the cost of our current dispatch services. And that budget has continued to go up yearly, just like everything else with us and the police department. Currently, we're looking at approximately $900, $900-plus, $1,000 a year in costs for our dispatch services. Of course, majority of that is the personnel benefits, salaries and benefits, with some training and some maintenance fees that are continuing to be annually accumulated. So we look at our current dispatch operations overview. What are our dispatchers actually doing? And it's really hard to quantify that, but we're going to try and put some understanding to that today. I've asked some of our dispatchers that are here before us today to actually come up and give you a little bit more insight to that, as well as the numbers and the justification that we're going to bring before you as well. So the Groveland Police Department Communications Center, it's a 24/7 service. These men and women are there each and every day, holidays included, and they're there to speak with those constituents, with those victims, and with those individuals calling in with needs for law enforcement, water services, various different needs throughout our city. It's more than just a 911 telecommunications center. We do answer 911 calls there. I think the war report will represent that we answer approximately 100 911 calls every two weeks and approximately 400-plus administrative calls every two weeks. And if you look at the history of the war reports, which you receive regularly, I think that you would see those numbers are very, very, very consistent in what these individuals do, and just a small part of what they do. Obviously, we dispatch calls, and if you look at our annual report, you'll see that we average about 50,000 communications or contacts with citizens annually. All of that would require some sort of communication with a member of our dispatch service, as well as the officers that are in the field. Our annual budget, as we talked about, if we could just go to the next slide. A little further. He's doing good in the back. There you go. So here's the actual cost breakdown in some sort of a spreadsheet or something that we could put together to clearly illustrate where we're at right now. You know, we look at the current cost for the dispatch. Our personnel, the salaries and benefits, like I said, take up the bulk of it, $696,000 roughly. If LCSO, Lake County Sheriff's Office, was to provide staffing for this, obviously that would be a cost to the City of Groveland, $696, roughly, thereabout. The equipment, the maintenance of the equipment that's in there, anybody that's been to our comm center will see that there's expensive equipment that has to be maintained and maintain certain standards. That's about $100,000 cost annually. And then, of course, training and compliance for our dispatchers to stay in compliance and to be properly trained and to be effective in what they do each and every day, which each and every one of these individuals do a fantastic job, comes with a cost of about $40,000 for additional training. And then we have overhead with utilities and administrative fees. You do have a lieutenant that is the ultimate oversight, who, well, the ultimate midline oversight, and ultimately, you have a deputy chief and myself. So you roll all that together in some sort of fashion, it comes up with an approximate $100,000 worth of overhead utilities and administrative costs. Again, that would be something that would be absorbed by the county if they were to assume those responsibilities. Next slide. So if you look at the date here, it's just as equally important, July 2nd, because it's such a fluid situation. So July 2nd, there was a meeting that was assembled, and I had asked the county to meet with the deputy chief, members of the county's dispatch administration met with the deputy chief. We had a discussion, or they had a discussion, rather, about what this would actually look like, and just to give us some more insight as to where we would be as a city and what their deliverables would look like. The radio console installation, so the majority of our, the majority of our equipment would be compatible, but there's some other things that they would have to upgrade, giving us a cost of about $100,000 to upgrade it to where we could actually be in a situation of where we could have them dispatch for us. That's a one-time cost for the city. The CAD system, we talk about the So we're still using, oh, you're good, keep it right there a second. So we're still utilizing the CAD system of Spillman, but we're in a very unique situation now because every municipality and as well as the county themselves, excluding Leesburg, is going to a new CAD system. This is a very expensive process, but they're going to have different methods of operation. The City of Groveland currently utilizes 10 codes, currently utilizes status codes that are not consistent, not familiar with by the county dispatchers currently. So all of this would go to plain talk. We expect, once the new CAD system's in place, that everything would go to plain talk anyways, just for more continuity throughout the different municipalities, as well as the county. We talk about the transition timeline in this meeting. So Finance has done some background as well. We certainly appreciate their efforts. But in this particular meeting on July 2nd, and we'll show another memo here shortly that contradicts this to some degree, but there's some reasoning behind it. We look at a timeframe here of this actual transition. So they didn't actually say, "Look, we can do this by January, we can do this by February, we can do this by March," at that July 2nd meeting. They simply said that the way they envisioned the transition taking place is to, prior to the transition, all of Groveland's dispatch goes to the Emergency Operations Center, where all of Groveland's dispatch, dispatches continues to dispatch for the City of Groveland only. So in doing so, the hopes of the county would be to acclimate those dispatchers to the county, the system that they operate, how they operate, what that looks like, so in the event that those do transition over, they would be more familiar with what the daily operations of the county would actually look like. The interim operations under what they call the COOP is, again, that's all of those 911 operators from the City of Groveland coming to EOC, working for the City of Groveland only. The City of Groveland would still be responsible for any financial costs as far as overhead, as far as payroll, benefits. It would still be our responsibility. It would not fully transition over until there was a signed contract in place. Again, we talked about the staffing. If we could just come up a little bit further on that slide. The operational changes for officers, LCSO will discontinue the use of 10 codes like we talked about. Once we go to this new premier CAD system, they're looking at countywide, doing away with the 10 codes and utilizing what we refer to as plain talk for radio The hot files that we have currently, we have everything that's in the NCIC, everything that's been reported as stolen, every missing child, every missing adult, things just of that nature, that go into NCIC or maintained, and what we currently have is called hot files. They have to be validated regularly, and they have to be continuously updated and taken out when they're no longer current, no longer valid, and entered properly and checked upon. You can do that electronically, or you can do that by hard copy. We currently continue to do it by hard copy, but in hopes of going electronically. And some of those files are rather old and continue to be there, but being checked upon regularly, it's mandated they continue to stay there. Next slide. So you'll see that this is on Lake County, Littlerhead, and this date is July 25th. So July 25th just gives us a little more insight, I think, again, our finance department for working collectively with us to make this possible. This was a memo that they had received, and when they reached out and asked for some additional correspondence, you can see that our Director of Finance, Pam, is on there, and we appreciate them for their insight as well. The proposal for the Emergency Communication Dispatch Services in the City of Groveland. I'm not going to burden you by reading through the entire thing, but it's pretty much, we had gone over with some, some things that are different that stand out to me that I think that you should take note of as well. If you look at the timeline here, about the middle of that timeline, you know, you see the project, as this project's complexity involves numerous variables, it is currently projected to extend beyond January of '26. So the importance of this is, at this point in time, they're telling us that they could not possibly take on our 911 communications center with our current call volume until the summer of 2026. And I think it's important to note that. That's what they're telling us right now. Things could change. You see in July correspondence, July 2nd correspondence, they indicated something a little different. But they here, when communicating with our finance department, clearly indicated that they didn't feel comfortable making this type of transition until the summer of 2026. So the annual contract, right, when you get down to dollars and cents, the annual contract that they base upon is $12 per person, per population, for the City of Groveland. They came up the number of 23,697 for our population, and you'll see in another slide what they base that off of. So you take that and you multiply that by the $12 per head, and I see the mayor's quick with his pencil over there. They gave us a liberty of giving us that number, sir, 284,364. Our current budget with, or with the comm center is approximately $936,000. They're telling us if, with our current population, that they would do that, provide a service for $284,364. You can turn the, bring the slide up a little bit, please? A little more? There we go. Oh, well, maybe not. Try it again. Okay. The, the, next slide? That's good, thank you. Again, this is the Lake County's correspondence with our finance division. We talk about what's going to happen with the equipment. That came up, too. They would utilize our current equipment to, for EOC, is my understanding, the current equipment that we have in there, the MWC 75, 7500 is not compatible with their current system that they're running, radio system they're running. The estimated cost to purchase and install a system that would bring us up to speed with what they, their needs are, is $100,000. It's a one-time cost. You talk about the hiring of our dispatchers, and this is rather important to me, too, and I think that the city really, if we really get down to bolts and nuts of this whole thing, and this does happen, one of the things that you're going to see me ask the city is to look at some sort of, and I don't know, maybe we need to, would go, have to go through Anita with this or not, but some sort of a constant, some sort of a constant, just to provide some sort of funds for these individuals that are no longer going to be able to be employed. I don't know how we could compensate them if they're not, if the Lake County Sheriff's Office doesn't pick them up, or if they choose not to go to work for Lake County. I'm sure there's some sort of package that we could put together for that, for the one-time package, again, at a one-time cost, knowing that, you know, the City of Groveland is going to save, you know, approximately $700,000, $800,000 annually. But looking at what the county has explained to us, they've explained to us that they're conscious of this as well, and they're prepared to look at us as, provide a 50% of service credit up to 10 years. So we have 911 communications officers that are, men are well beyond 10 years even, but they could expect to see five years in salary. Now, there's a table that we're going to look at here on the next slide that'll give you an idea of where that means and what that means in dollars and cents. But I just wanted you to understand that any one of our members that are currently employed by the City of Groveland, if they should be employed by the Lake County Sheriff's Office, that there would be some sort of a step plan, a compensation plan in place. Something that we need to be conscious of here, too, if we were to make this transition, needn't that be this year, next year, or whenever, we need to be conscious of the fact that, listen, we're not dealing with just 911 operators here. Our communications center does some various different tasks. Who's going to answer your water after hours? Water complaints. We get a lot of them. That's currently being done by your 911 telecommunications center. Who's going to fill in for some of our community outreach events? That's currently being offset by them. So they're, what I'm trying to convey here to you tonight is that it's more than just a person at the other end of the phone, and we need to be conscious of that. And I believe that's going to bring us to the end. Do we have it? No, the next slide. Let's talk about the tables. Next slide, please. Criminal histories, we currently have those run by dispatch, and they're readily available for the officers. Officers make a case on the streets, they need a criminal history, they can get that the same night, same time, same place. The only difference that would be there is we'd have to order it. Somebody could come in, works administratively with, throughout the day in the police department, that has those read and write privileges, could run the criminal history the following day. But dispatch would not be on hand to be able to do that for us. Next slide. So we talked about how they came to that cost, right? So if you look at the population table, this is what they used, this is where they came up with that, this is not a number that they just pulled out of the air. This is a slide that they utilized to come up with our current population. Next slide. Okay. So if you look at this table here, the table that they put it for you is what they would provide as far as any of our 911 operators that were to transition over to the county, knowing that they get a half a year for every year of service up to 10 years. And that's what, dollars and cents is what that would look like before you. And next slide, if there is one, I believe this is the last one. I think that's it. I'll open it up for any questions you may have for me directly, prior to having dispatch themselves come in here and tell you about the more of a personal side of it.
Let's have dispatch remove.
Yes, sir.
Everybody question.
Which one of you lovely ladies will be here first? Ms. Tara.
Ms. Mayor, my name is... I serve the Groveland.
Can you pull that mic up a little bit?
Is that better? I live off of South O'Brien Road in Groveland. I'm a communications supervisor with the Groveland Police Department. I've proudly served the City of Groveland for more than eight years. I'm here today to discuss the consolidation of our dispatch center with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Our units do not currently share a channel with any other agency. They have on-demand access to our dispatch at all times. They have on-demand access to our dispatch at all times. If consolidated, Groveland units will share a radio channel with Mascot PD. Currently, our agency has up to 10 radio channels available for our units to utilize. This means that if a critical or high priority event were taking place on our primary channel, our units are able to move to any of the secondary channels without needing to request permission to do so. This results in continuous seamless operations, reduces congestion, and prevents interference from other agencies. The proposal states, "The availability of sufficient staffing to absorb the increased workload remains a critical consideration," and that the transition may be feasible during the late summer of 2026. The SO currently has upwards of 16 vacant positions. As a trainer, I'm well aware of how lengthy and demanding the hiring and training processes are, and that due to the nature of our work, not all candidates will complete training. High turnover rate is a common challenge in many dispatch centers. Presently, we employ eight full-time dispatchers and have two vacancies. A conditional offer was recently extended to a qualified applicant. While we are a smaller agency, we are not facing the same critical staffing issues as the SO. We've been fully staffed for many years, and these two vacancies only became available due to changes in personal circumstances for the employees who resigned. I believe our retention reflects the positive morale, teamwork, and shared sense of purpose and pride in the work we do, qualities that mirror the natural charm of our city. The proposal includes an estimate for the annual contract. However, this figure may change based on the most recently published population estimate at the time the contract begins. Additionally, it is important to note that our current equipment is not compatible with the SO's radio consoles. The city would need to purchase a compatible radio console to accommodate the additional channel. As technology continues to advance, some programs and equipment will inevitably become obsolete and require replacement. At present, we have the necessary equipment to perform our duties, pending the installment of the new CAD and phone systems, which will also be required for the SO. Our city is experiencing rapid growth and development to include multiple new subdivisions, businesses, and a school. Many of these areas do not show on any mapping service. Groveland dispatchers have worked alongside our road patrol units to locate addresses and cross streets for these developments, furthering our knowledge of the geographical area, our jurisdictional zones, and giving us the ability to locate our units when mapping services are unable to assist. There have been incidents where either a caller or unit has, for example, only been able to provide a subdivision name. Due to our advanced knowledge of our area, Groveland dispatchers are able to identify these locations quickly. We know our community better than anyone else because we are also members of our community. We are your friends, neighbors, and coworkers. We are familiar with many of our callers. We know their voices, names, addresses, descriptions, and are familiar with any ongoing issues they may be experiencing. Oftentimes, units can give us just a name, and we know exactly who they are with and can access their information quickly. This allows for a more personable, empathetic, and efficient service to the public and our officers. Our dispatch center handles a wide range of calls, from routine after-hours utility issues to life or death emergencies. I'd like to share a call I personally took that illustrates the level of care and attention our dispatchers provide. A caller reported his elderly father, who suffers from early onset dementia, as overdue. I was able to reach the father by phone and learn that he had been driving alone for several hours and was disoriented. With only minimal information, I found his location and calmly instructed him to pull over and park in a safe area. While I stayed on the line with him, my partner relayed updates to the responding unit assisting the caller and contacted the jurisdictional agency where the elderly man was located. They dispatched an officer to ensure his safety until his son could arrive. I remained on the phone with the gentleman for over an hour, keeping him company, monitoring his condition, and reassuring him until help arrived. Had we been facing the same call volume and staffing challenges as the sheriff's office, I may not have been able to remain on the line. This is just one of many instances where our dispatchers have responded with diligence, professionalism, and compassion. Being a smaller agency, we have come to know each other on a more personal level. We are truly a law enforcement family. We have celebrated our personal and professional successes and supported each other during the difficult times. The level of camaraderie within our department is unmatched, and that extends to and includes dispatch. We share strong working relationships that are built on teamwork and trust. When you work with someone for 12 hours a day, you quickly learn their habits, personality traits, and quirks. Groveland dispatchers know their units better than anyone else. We can immediately identify when they may be experiencing a problem on scene merely by the slightest change in their voice. There have been many times our dispatchers have sensed our units may be in distress and dispatched backup response without needing to be told to do so, only to discover that our units were in a physical altercation and were unable to call for help themselves. Our dispatch is a centralized hub and could be considered the heart of our agency. From road patrol to detectives to CSI to administrative staff, as well as other city departments, we are relied upon to access, locate, and convey information quickly and accurately. This also fosters better coordination in large-scale incidents or mutual aid situations. An example of this was our emergency operations during hurricane season. Members of the SO's communications department are simply not able to accommodate other city departments as they are often inundated with calls and/or short-staffed. If you haven't done so already, I implore you to read, really read, and understand this proposal and what it will mean for Groveland PD's dispatchers. There is no guarantee of our employment with the sheriff's office. Many of us are mothers and fathers. Some of us are the sole providers for our families. In an ever-inflated economy, it is not to say, it is not enough to say, every effort will be made to hire all qualified dispatchers currently employed by the city of Groveland. We are a family. We are your family. We have worked tirelessly through days, nights, weekends, holidays, birthdays, and our children's milestones, all to answer the call for service, and that's why I stand before you, unable to silently surrender our communication center. This is not about an us versus them. This is about eight public safety professionals who love their job, their coworkers, and their city. We're not asking for anything more than the chance to keep doing what we do, serving our city within the heart of our city.
Thank you.
No? What about now? Okay. My name is Jessica Cool, and I've had the privilege of serving with the Groveland Police Department for four and a half years. Last year, I made the personal decision to purchase my first home just outside the city limits in Howie, so I could be closer to the community I proudly serve. Like many of my colleagues, I am deeply committed to the city, and I write you today with a heartfelt plea to preserve Groveland's local dispatch. Our dispatch team is more than just a voice on the other end of the call, we are a lifeline. I have taken emergency calls and dispatched for shootings, stabbings, devastating vehicle accidents, overdoses, suicides, domestic assaults, and many other life-changing calls. But I'd like to share just one call of many that illustrates exactly why having our own dispatch matters so deeply. Last year, I received a 911 open line call. It lasted only just a few seconds, just long enough to know someone might be in danger. But with no direct communication and the location being just outside our jurisdiction, I followed protocol, entered the call, and notified the Lake County Sheriff's Office. The call was ultimately closed by Lake County Sheriff's Office without further action. Something didn't feel right, and I couldn't shake the feeling that someone needed help. I kept calling the number back until finally, a young male voice answered, barely conscious. He had been a serious single-vehicle crash, his car hidden from view down a hill, and with my training and experience, I was able to almost pinpoint his exact location. If, if I hadn't followed my gut that night, he may have never been found in time. I dispatched officers immediately, and thanks to their swift response, the man was airlifted to the hospital with critical injuries. He did survive. For that incident, I received two awards and was nominated for the Florida Police Chiefs Association Award. I didn't win the third award, but that wasn't what mattered. What mattered was knowing I helped save a life. This moment is just one example of why our local dispatch is irreplaceable. Our dispatchers know this community, its geography, and its people. We don't just follow procedures, we listen to our instincts, we go the extra mile, and we care deeply. We are not just employees, we are parents, siblings, sons, and daughters. This is not just their job, it is our calling. I respectfully urge you to recognize the profound impact Groveland's own dispatch has on public safety and community trust. Please stand with us, support our agency, and allow us to continue serving the citizens of Groveland with the dedication and heart they deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name's Dakota, and I'm one of the city of Groveland's communications officers. I'd like to address the ongoing discussion of the Groveland Dispatch Center and the recent proposal for our removal. A Facebook post was recently made to keep Groveland on its page soliciting public opinion. It's important to recognize that while the public's voice is vital, there's often a gap in understanding for law enforcement and the functions behind its, behind the scenes, particularly in areas of jurisdiction and dispatching. One notable comment made on this post suggested that uniformity in codes across departments could simply, correction, could simplify mutual aid communications. While this may appear reasonable, the only difference between Groveland and the rest of the county is its unique use of status codes. These codes have never been problematic in operational settings. Status codes serve to clearly communicate the outcome of a call within the Groveland PD. This is not to hinder inoperability between agencies. Another commenter rightly observed that delays can occur when calls must be relayed to city to county, such as medical emergencies. However, it's essential to note that Groveland PD and the Sheriff's Office dispatch follow the same procedure, routing medical calls to fire rescue dispatch. This standardization exists regardless of whether Groveland or the county is handling the calls. For general law enforcement calls, our agency utilizes the same computer-aided dispatch system as the sheriff's office. In situations where a call is of such high priority that transferring it may cause delays, our agency can initiate the call directly into the shared CAD system. This allows the sheriff's office to view and acknowledge the call in real time, even as additional details are still being entered, ensuring that response efforts are not delayed. One participant on the same post noted that issues such as inadequate equipment, inefficient dispatching, and jurisdictional disputes could be resolved by eliminating Groveland's dispatch services. However, Groveland already possesses equipment and resources comparable to those of the county. We utilize drone operators, a K-9 unit, and have breathalyzer-certified dispatchers, six out of eight. I would also like to note, without dispatchers who are certified breathalyzer operators, there's a greater risk of pulling our officers off the road to assist with calls for other agencies, such as Mascot PD and Claremont PD. Aside from our certified dispatchers, only our traffic units hold the certification, and they are often unavailable due to their existing duties or being off-duty. These capabilities allow us to assist other agencies and maintain independence from LCSO support, especially in DUI-related incidents. It is also worth noting that our agency does not argue over territory. Each call is automatically routed through our CAD system to proper jurisdiction using the verified mapping system. For example, some addresses validate as ours, but is actually for the sheriff's office. We, in these events, we communicate with the sheriff's office dispatch and advise them, even though the system says it is ours, it'll be their responsibility to respond. And so the appropriate agency responds without dispute. A key distinction between city and county dispatch operations lies in the scope of agency support. County dispatch centers often manage communications for multiple agencies simultaneously, including their own. This can lead to delays in radio traffic as deputies and offers, officers may experience wait times before transmitting critical information. These delays can impede field operations and hinder timely access to essential data for both law enforcement personnel and dispatchers. While the city of Groveland may experience similar constraints during periods of high call volume, the smaller scale of operations generally allow for more open and immediate radio communications for officers, increasing officer safety. Furthermore, because the sheriff's office dispatch faces challenges of understaffing and higher call volumes, instances have been observed where crucial details are omitted. This observation is based off of the shared CAD system and monitoring the Sector 3 radio channel. The Groveland Dispatch Center strives to maintain a high standard of service, treating each call as a priority for both public and officer safety, aiming for accuracy, thoroughness, and optimal timing in information relay. While this is not intended as a critique of county dispatching skills, the city's dispatchers benefit from specialized knowledge of Groveland and its surrounding areas, for increased capacity for radio transmissions, enabling comprehensive and timely information exchange between callers and patrol. Over the years, our dispatchers, road patrol, and administrators have evolved into more than just coworkers. We have become a family. While many law enforcement officers and dispatchers have come and gone, a dedicated few have remained for years. I personally have been at Groveland for nearly two years, and in that time, this role has become like a second family to me. This job has given me the opportunity to build meaningful friendships and to be guided by mentors I never expected. It has been an honor to work with such a supportive team over the past couple of years. I've also learned to enjoy coming to work not simply to perform my duties, but to be a part of a team that supports each other. Professionalism is essential in our field, but it is also important that people enjoy where they work and look forward to their day. That kind of morale leads to a stronger performance and a more cohesive unit. A few examples of bonds I've formed are included but not limited to being able to recognize the change in tone for our officers just over the radio. I've shared meals and built lasting memories with fellow officers and dispatchers, and I've received emotional support from my team for professional and personal issues. Unfortunately, this level of connection and care is not seen something easily replicated at a county level. While the county undoubtedly cares for their teams, the closeness and trust we've developed within our department is unique, and it's something that cannot be replaced without significant impact. While these factors may facilitate a transition, it is important to include that Groveland dispatchers cannot simply be transferred to the county. We would still have to undergo the standard hiring process and training protocols applicable to all LCSO dispatchers. There is also no guarantee that we will maintain our current rate of pay under a different agency. A potential reduction in income would have serious impacts for our dispatchers, many of whom are new homeowners, single mothers, and the main source of income for their families. Each of us has built our future around the stability of our existing salaries. In conclusion, Groveland's dispatchers are not just a communications hub, they are a cornerstone of our operational independence and public safety efficiency, and the heart of our law enforcement family. We ask that this be taken into careful consideration when discussing any potential restructuring or the removal of our dispatch operations.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ari Lugo, and I'm a senior dispatcher for the Groveland Police Department. I started my career on November 13th, 2017, almost eight years ago, and I've devoted every day since to serving this city with everything I have. I'm standing before you tonight, not just as a dispatcher, but as a mother, a neighbor, a homeowner, and someone who is truly afraid of what tomorrow might bring. Just a little over a month ago, I made the biggest financial decision of my life and bought my first home, as close as possible to the community I serve and the community my children attend school. I planted roots. I live close enough to always be available when needed. I bought with intention to stay close, to remain committed to Groveland, and to give my children a stable, safe place to call home. I never imagined that weeks later, I'd be standing here wondering if I'll even have a job to keep that home. I'm a single mother of three beautiful children who joined me here today. Jaden, my youngest, has autism, and almost two years ago, developed a neurological and heart condition that resulted in a physical disability. He now requires the use of a cane and wheelchair, frequent medical appointments, and bi-weekly home visits from his nurse for IV infusion treatments. This is not something that I can put a hold on. His care is constant, and he, just like my other two children, depend on me. Right now, I have the flexibility to be there for him. If he has a medical emergency at school, which happens, I can be there quickly. I can make his appointments, I can keep our life balanced. But if I'm forced to start over with another agency, which is farther away, with no seniority, no security, and no understanding of my situation, that stability vanishes. This change doesn't just move us, it uproots us. This job isn't just what I do, it's who I am. It's a part of my identity. In our communication center, we are a family. We've built something unique, a team that knows each other so well, we can read each other's minds across the room. We can recognize our officers' voices in a split second. We know when something's wrong before a single word is spoken. You don't find that kind of connection in a new workplace, you build it, and we've spent years doing just that. There are eight of us in dispatch, and each one of us has their own stories and our own families depending on this job. Some of us are single parents, some are living paycheck to paycheck. This decision doesn't just affect where we work, it affects whether we can keep feeding our children, paying our, or keeping the light on. We've watched this department grow, watched the new public safety building rise from the ground up, and felt immense pride being a part of something bigger than ourselves. And now, with one vote, we might be pushed aside. Our voices, our sacrifices, our service may feel disposable. Please, I implore you, don't do this. Don't erase what we've built, don't take away the safety net that we've created for our families, don't up... Don't uproot mothers, fathers, children, real people with real lives that hang in the balance of this decision. This isn't just about operations, this is about people. I ask you to see us, hear us, look beyond the numbers and logistics, and recognize the human cost. Please put yourselves in our shoes. Imagine making the biggest leap of your life, financially, finally having stability, only to have it yanked away without warning. And if you've ever been there, if you've ever felt that pit in your stomach of not knowing how you'll make ends meet, how you'll care for your child, or how you'll face tomorrow, I ask you to remember that feeling. I chose Groveland. I have given Groveland my loyalty, my time, and my heart. All I'm asking is that you all choose the same too. Thank you for your time, and I truly hope your compassion.
Chief, can we, do we, I see we have a row of our police department back there. Did somebody want to represent them and come up and say a few words?
Can you hear me? Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Officer Jason Gilbert. To reiterate what they've said, these aren't our dispatchers. These are our shiftmates. We spend more time talking to some of these ladies than we do our own spouses and children. Telecommunicator right, telecommunicator cool are our dispatchers. They are members of our team, they are members of Delta Shift. And like they said, if they pick up on the tone in our voice that is unusual, they'll just send us help. They won't wait for us to ask for it. They know what our idiosyncrasies are, they know what we need before we have to ask for it. And it's unlikely, I think, that if we went to the county outside of one of them being employed by the county in that capacity, that we would get the same kind of service and the same kind of camaraderie that we get from our own in-house dispatchers. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, now we get into discussion, and we'll...
Me, Joe?
Okay. So, I was gonna start with how many openings does Lake County currently have for dispatchers, but that was already answered by the dispatchers. So, I was gonna ask, how would our level of service change? I think they did a pretty good job of explaining that also, so that doesn't need to be asked anymore. Would the county be able to handle the increased call volume? I was recently filing a police report in Claremont, and the officer standing in front of me couldn't get radio traffic to run my ID. Was it urgent? Not at that time, but that doesn't mean it doesn't happen when it's urgent too. So, just personal experience there, does... I can't imagine if they need that information immediately and they can't get it. So, does Lake County even think they'd be able to handle that increase in call volume?
I'm not in a position to answer that. Summer of '26 would be a date that they felt that it could comfortably do so.
Is there anything in that contract that keeps them from raising our rate to $0.40 a resident in the next three years or anything?
I don't believe that an actual contract is provided for review.
Okay. Well, I mean, the number we're working off is $0.12 a resident, correct? If that's the number that... Or $12, my bad, you're right. So, is there anything keeping them from raising that? Because just $40 per resident pays for our dispatch without changing anything. And that would follow up with how long is that price locked in for? Or would it be at all? Because I don't feel like we can even entertain this until we have all the facts, and working on maybes and what-ifs and possibles doesn't sound like it would be worth putting anyone in jeopardy for, including these ladies right here and their jobs. And then on top of that, we'd also have to spend money for non-emergency routing in a call center, correct?
We would have to have some sort of calling...
And the other constituent complaints that might come in administratively.
That we build a community around the police, fire, and part of the police department is sitting in front of us. I have a lot of questions that I'm not sure I'm completely sure of. We've got eight dispatchers right now in the City of Groveland? Or is that eight that would be available at the county?
We have ten FTDs currently.
Okay. Okay. It would seem to me that if we did move over to the county, that we would need some sort of support here for some of those things that you've been talking about with regards to utilities or otherwise. So, I can see where we're gonna need at least two per day, 24-hour shifts, in order to answer those other calls. So, I'm not trying to water anything down, I'm just saying that there would be a need, in my opinion. What was the leftover cost to the city? And, you know, I'm only asking about the cost. This is not totally about cost. Years ago, when I first moved in there, I picked up the telephone and the dispatcher said, "Oh, Mr. Razik, what can I do for you?" I mean, they knew me by name. That's not necessarily the case now, but then again, we've got five times as many residents than we had back then. But they're still a very important part. But tell me, what is gonna be left over to the city for regards, with regards to our cost?
Without the contract, according to speculation, what's the cost?
Well, we would anticipate $600,000 to $700,000 annually.
Cost left over to the city?
Oh, I apologize. Approximately $300,000 a year cost to the city annually, with a one-time startup fee of approximately $100,000 for additional equipment and some other miscellaneous.
We use 911.
We use 911, I'm sorry, use the county dispatchers for the fire department. I don't know when we transferred it over, but why we have done that when we had dispatchers here.
We, I write here 2017, is that...
Okay.
We do not, our fire calls are not transferred to the Lake County Sheriff's Office, they're transferred to fire rescue dispatch.
Right.
They're their own entity.
They're dispatched, but they're dispatched by their own entity, a fire department. They're not dispatched by us, nor is the Lake County Sheriff's Office Dispatchers dispatching for the fire department. Fire department has their own dispatch, is what I'm trying to convey to you, and it's been that way since prior to 2017.
So, our dispatchers, they're not completely fire department.
Responsibility.
To say that they have no fire department responsibility would be wrong.
You'd be wrong, that's fine.
Because they have to screen all of the 911 calls in order to know where the entity is.
Understand. I am extremely concerned about the summer of 2026. What we know now might not be what we are going to know later, so I'm not very, very happy or supportive of everything that you haven't said, which is the cost or anything else. Without having a little bit more specificity, I can't entertain this.
And this one's not working either. I'll just holler.
Thank you. Hello, hello? Well, is this on? Oh, my word, this is crazy town. Okay. So, Chief Ramsey, I'm looking at one of the slides here, and it says that Lake County Sheriff's Office has proposed, assuming the dispatch responsibilities, why are they proposing that? What is, what's the pull for them? What does this provide to them, taking this out of Groveland, if that question makes sense to you?
That's a fair question. I don't know that it's necessarily anything more than just work for them, maybe control, maybe regionalization of services. I think that you're seeing an interest in other public services being regionalized in the state. Perhaps that's what draws us, I don't know. We've seen Mount Door, and did it recently, and two years ago, and you know, your dispatch to the county last year. It's totally speculation on what I believe the reasoning might be.
So, with that, use Mount Door, let's just use Mount Door as an example. What did they do at that point to cover their water calls that you talked about, or outreach calls? How did, do you know how they handled that, or do you have any information on that?
Currently, I do not.
Okay.
And that's something we would have to, you know, get counted and make corrections, looking at this further, that's something we have to research. One of the other disabilities that's gone, the county dispatch done, is related services.
Okay. And then further down, I think the last slides, you talked about there with the, and I apologize, I don't know what page it was on, I think I have one here that, was it the 10-year step-up program, I think, that you talked about?
So, the county has proposed 10 years of service at point five, for one of our communications officers that has, I think, two years to be credited, a point year for the county.
Okay. So, looking at that last chart on the very last page, looks at years of services, years of service, 10 years, hourly wage, weekly wage, annual wage. Is that commensurate with what our dispatchers are making now?
I would tell you that it's my personal belief, just based upon looking at payroll regularly, and every couple of weeks, that any dispatcher went over there and took a 10-year maximum compensation for what the county went off on, it would be forced to take a pay cut.
They would be forced to take a pay cut. Thank you. I can be, I can be done with the rest of my questions. I appreciate that, thank you.
One of the requests, can you guys hear me?
I can hear.
One of the requests was to read the proposal.
I've read the proposal more than one time. So, what you're about to hear from me tonight are comments on my thoughts about, I don't know if the right word is subcontracting, but giving this to the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I really appreciate the effort to control costs and reduce expenses. My question is, and I don't want an answer from anyone, is how do you quantify savings, and at what human cost? So, you might be saving money today, but are you uprooting and are you gutting the employees' work lives as well as their neighborhood lives? Do you all risk losing public trust, institutional knowledge, and the community economic health? You see, real savings only counts if the people impacted are protected. Otherwise, there is no real savings. And without a guarantee from the Sheriff's Office, anything less undermines the promise of responsibility, community-centered governance. I don't expect this question to be answered tonight, but my question is, if this happens, then what's going to happen to the space that the dispatchers had? Lake County Sheriff's Office, while I appreciate their plan to hire displaced staff, there aren't any guarantees. So, my question is, how will you hold them accountable if they don't meet their promises? I think that this needs to be considered, reconsidered. Again, the employees are the real value here. Thank you.
Chief, just let me get something clear. We couldn't start this until next summer, is that correct?
That's the information that was given to us as of 25th of July.
And so, boy, it would have been great to have this prior to voting on the maximum mills, because I know that was in there, and that understanding kind of throws us off, and so that budget no longer exists if that can't, if that can't happen. I find the proposal to be not quite complete.
Oh, for sure.
And I think that, that, I'll be honest with you, we're gonna look at every single place that we're spending a million dollars or more on something, because it's your all money, and we want to make sure that it's right. But, and believe me, I'm not saying this isn't right, but we will look at all different avenues as we, as we move forward. Right now, I'm in agreement with the rest of the council, both in philosophy, but also in practicality, since this was brought up as a cost-saving measure for this year's budget, and it won't happen, or it can't happen. So, I would say that thank you very much to you and your staff for the very professional and very heartfelt presentations. Thanks to our officers for representing that group, and I will adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can we respectfully ask for a five-minute break or so while the room clears out? We'll set up some more chairs and work on the audio.
Yes, sir. We will take a five-minute recess, please.
It is.
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you.
No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you.
No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Thank you. Ah, you too. Yes, ma'am. It's good to see you. No, we use this. I have it on. You muted it, yeah?
Do you need a mic? The mic's not on.
Consideration of approval. June 23rd, 2025, City Council Workshop Minutes. June 30th, 2025, City Council Special Meeting Minutes. July 7th, 2025, City Council Workshop Minutes. July 7th, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes. Ordinance 2025-8, FY 2024-2025, Midyear Budget Amendment, Second Reading, and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida, pursuant to Section 5.03(c) of the City of Groveland Charter, amending the budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year by increasing and/or decreasing various line items received and incurred after the original budget was approved, providing for scrivener's errors, conflict, severability, and providing for an effective date. Resolution 2025-45, Designating the Community Development Department as the administrative authority to receive and process final plat's and replats, Designating the Community Development Director as the administrative official to approve with conditions and deny approval of final plat's and replats. Resolution 2025-46, Approving Subordination of City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road 50, State Road Number 5033, Parcel Number 118.03. Resolution 2025-47, Approving the Subordination of City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road 50, Parcel Number 119.03. Resolution 2025-48, Approving Subordination of City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road Number 50, Parcel Number 113.02. Resolution 2025-49, Approving Subordination of City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road 50, Parcel Number 134.04. Resolution 2025-50, Approving the Subordination of City Utility Interests, State of Florida Department of Transportation, for State Road 50, State Road Number 50, Parcel Number 144.04. Resolution 2025-51, Approving Subordination of the City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road Number 50, Parcel Number 146.06. Resolution 2025-52, Approving the Subordination of City Utility Interests to the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road Number 50, Parcel Number 148.03. Resolution 2025-53, Approving Subordination of City Utility Interests in the State of Florida Department of Transportation for State Road Number 50, Parcel Number 154.05. Ordinance 2025-05, Galassi Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Second Reading, and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, County of Lakes, Florida, amending the City of Groveland's comprehensive plan pursuant to 163.31871 Florida statutes by amending the future land use designation from City of Groveland Agriculture to the City of Groveland Employment Center on the future land use map for the herein described property consisting of 2.98 plus minus acres, authorizing the city manager to amend said comprehensive plan, repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for severability and scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date, and providing for the forwarding of this ordinance to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Ordinance 2025-06, Galassi Rezoning, Second Reading, and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida, to change the zoning from City of Groveland Agriculture to the City of Groveland Light Industrial for the herein described property owned by Dennis M. and Maxine D. Galassi and located at 14925 Timber Village Road, Groveland, Florida, lying west of Timber Village Road, north of State Road 50, east of Sampi Road, and south of Ed Douglas Road. Directing the city manager to amend the zoning map as herein provided after the passage of this ordinance, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2025-9, Dennis Galassi Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Second Reading, and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Groveland's comprehensive plan pursuant to 163.31871 Florida statutes by amending the future land use plan designation from City of Groveland Agriculture to the City of Groveland Established Neighborhood on the future land use map for the herein described properties consisting of 3.0 plus minus acres, authorizing the city manager to amend said comprehensive plan, repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for severability and scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date, and providing for the forwarding of this ordinance to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Ordinance 2025-10, Dennis Galassi Rezoning, Second Reading, and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland to change the zoning from City of Groveland Agriculture to the City of Groveland Low Density Residential for the herein described property owned by Dennis M. and Maxine D. Galassi and located at 14925 Timber Village Road, Groveland, Florida, lying west of Timber Village Road, north of State Road 50, east of Sampi Road, and south of Ed Douglas Road. Directing the city manager to amend the zoning map as herein provided after the passage of this ordinance, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you. That was quite a bit. Appreciate that, Jenny. Could we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as read?
I motion to accept the consent agenda.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? On the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion? Can we call... We don't need any discussion from the audience, so go ahead and call the vote.
Councilmember Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Councilmember Radzik?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Now, reformulating, we have no old business to re-go back and place these new items under new business. We'll go ahead and take them in order. Item F, Referendum, Ordinance 25-19, Forfeiture of Office, Second Reading. Jenny, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, referendum ordinance 2025-19, Forfeiture of Office, Second Reading. And ordinance of the City of Groveland, County of Lakes, State of Florida, providing for amendment of Section 3.06 and Article 3 relating to the forfeiture of office, enumerating reasons that permit council to declare a forfeiture of office set forth a complaint and hearing process for forfeiture of office, providing for specifying requisite ballot language for submission to electors requesting the supervisor elections to place the ballot language on the ballot for the November 4th, 2025, general election, providing for severability, conflicts, providing for inclusion in the charter, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Do we... We'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve, to accept ordinance 2025-19. Afterwards, we'll get a discussion, or we can do a motion just to discuss.
Motion to discuss, please.
We have a motion and we have a second, just to discuss. Mr. Radzik?
I'm hopeful that this is...
Nope. Can anyone hear me now? Yes, no?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize. I was informed that the system that had been working for a few weeks had rebooted, and there's some latency with the primary system. So I would encourage you to use the old system and speak very close and into the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. So I guess my... Can anyone hear me?
No.
Okay, I'll just scream some more. So just a couple of facts. In 20 years that I've been here, we've had one instance where councilperson was removed. And we had the ability to do so, although we needed to look at what qualification meant. This amendment that is being proposed is not changing anything with regards to our ability, because the items that we are basically having in this amendment is the same exact items that we have in our current charter. The only thing that would be changing would be a 4-1 majority versus a simple majority. And with that said, before I go any further, I guess I kind of just need for Mayor Keough to maybe give me some specificity as to what it is that you feel is important to have this charter amendment. What am I missing? What brings this on?
The charter amendment was composed...
The charter amendment has been proposed because of legal issues that the city has recently been made aware of with our current plan, our current charter, and our current code of ethics. The code of ethics was not tied to the charter. Therefore, the code of ethics was then ruled non-compliant, non-applicable. This charter amendment, as fashioned by our city attorney, comes from language that other cities in the area use. I think the first one was DeBarry that we took a look at. But the whole reason to do this is so that there is some accountability towards the... between the charter and the code of ethics, so that there is enforceability. And remember, that's enforceability from sanctions all the way through. We need to tie something in there. We assign it. And this ties it together. That's why we're doing this particular upgrade.
So we mentioned the code of ethics, which, by the way, I understand... I got... This one seems to be working now. I understand tying it all in, but this amendment does not do that. This amendment talks about failure to attend meetings, interference with administration. It talks about someone who's a convicted felon or criminal misdemeanor. It talks about if any time during the term, a qualification is... You lack qualification. So while I definitely agree that this charter needs to have some work done, I really believe that the code of ethics needs to be codified in our ordinance and then tied to this section, because right now, this is no different. There's... Right now, if I was to go out and, I don't know... Well, maybe that doesn't make sense. I was going to say get a DUI, but that would be probably in here. But there's nothing that is in this new amendment that's going to help us with regards to some of the issues that we faced in the path. I believe we really need to slow it down, get an ordinance of the code of ethics approved, and then tie that in as specific reasons with which to declare a forfeiture. My other questions would be, has this been vetted? How many other cities have got this? And I do have in front of me the DeBarry complete... The complete area of why a member can be forfeited and the reasons. And again, it talked about qualification. It talked about express prohibition, anything that expresses... Anything that violates the express prohibition of this charter is convicted of a felony or misdemeanor or failure to attend regular meetings. That's the same exact thing we have in our charter. The only thing that's changing is a 4-1 and a process. And the process is probably important, but again, one time in 20 years... I say make it one time in 21 years. Slow it down, get an ordinance, make sure that it's going to hold up, that it's not going to be contested, although it will probably always be contested. And that is my concerns about the way that this is currently written.
Thank you.
Who seconded the motion? Who seconded?
The discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Carol.
I don't have anything. I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Fike?
Is this working? I'm going to hold it. It's like revolving vikes. I have a few questions. Anita, do you know how many other cities in Florida besides DeBarry allow the city council to remove another city council person out of the 400-plus cities?
I do not.
So, and thank you for that. I did some work on that today, and believe it or not, there's only one other, and it's Weston. So there are two cities out of 400-plus cities that have some language similar to this. It's DeBarry and Weston. Two other cities, Sarasota and Lake Hamilton, talk about other city personnel, but not council members or mayors. So I'd be happy to give you the information that I was able to find online for that. So is, again, Anita, I've got several questions for you. Is there any verification of probable cause that the charter was broken before an allegation is initially reviewed by the council?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay. So is there any verification of probable cause that the charter was broken before an allegation can initially be reviewed by the council? So what's the probable cause that brings it up, I guess, to be reviewed?
So the way the DeBarry one was worded and that we carried over into this proposed language, it just requires a complaint to be filed with the city clerk's office. And then that information, whatever is provided, gets presented to the council for an initial determination. And then council can make an initial determination for a suspension, but then it gets set for a hearing in the future after more investigation has taken place.
Thank you. So what proof is there? Will there need to be proof of an accusation submitted by the citizen? Is it just spaghetti thrown at a wall? Something where they write up, they cite what the allegation is? Exactly what is the process?
I think that's going to be, have to be set forth in an ordinance adopted by the council detailing all of those specifics, as opposed to putting them in the charter.
Okay. Is there any limit to the number of accusations one citizen can make that triggers a city council discussion?
No, as written, it would just take one complaint.
So it could just continue to... They could just continue to bring complaints forward time and time and time again?
Correct.
So tell me legally, what do these discussions look like? For instance, will we be required to accept public comment on all accusations?
Before a decision is made of the council, public comment should be taken.
Okay. Again, this kind of ties in. Is there a statute of limitations for any accusations?
Not as written.
Does the charter discuss actions before a council person is elected?
The charter provision does not.
Thank you. When it discusses qualifications for city council, are there any other qualifications required other than residency? And I believe here it's two years. I could be wrong on that.
So the qualifications goes back to how someone qualifies, which is more than just the city's charter requiring a 24-month residency. It also includes, are you a registered voter? All of those things that you have to demonstrate in order to get your voter registration card, so you can't be a convicted felon and those sorts of things.
Thank you. Is there a recall process if voters would like to remove a council member?
Yes, there's a statutory process.
And what other actions are available for citizens to remove someone who has broken the charter?
Election is the only other that I am aware of. Would be an election at election time, the recall provision under the charter or under the statute.
Thank you. So for my city council members up here, you need to say, you say you need to fix this because of the court case, the recent court case. What is the accusation that shows I broke any aspect of the charter? And what is it? Tell me, is there any evidence that I broke the charter?
The allegations that have been raised, if found to be true, does not give the council the ability to remove a council member for those reasons, as the charter is currently written.
Thank you. So Anita, again, would this ordinance, going forward, then apply to any accusation made of me going back historically?
So the way the proposed charter is written, it really, it would not apply, because it's not tied, as Mr. Radzik mentioned, it's not tied to the code of ethics. And it doesn't have a limitation. Like, it doesn't say, and these are things you could spell out if given more time to draft it, or in your ordinance perhaps, but it doesn't specify that it's for things only going forward or while you're a sitting council member. It doesn't go into that much detail.
So back to the council members here. I'm really troubled why we are trying to supersede voters when they already have two processes for removing a council member. More a statement than a question, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around why we're moving forward with that. And that's all I have for right now. Oh, wait a minute, I lied. I got one more. Sorry. It's on another sheet of paper. So Anita, I think this is probably to you, and it may sound a little repetitious, and I apologize, but what recourse is available if a council member is suspended at the first hearing but there is no supporting evidence that one of these four reasons was not met? And I believe you read the four reasons, did you not, Mr. Radzik, earlier?
I read what was in our current charter and also what was in the DeBarry charter.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Since I don't have that in front of me, I can't reference back to it, but I know that you did. And Anita, I'd like to be, I'd like to know who would be liable for attorney fees and damages if a suspension was falsely made?
That's not set forth in the charter provision.
Thank you. Troubled. I am troubled by a lot of things that have been going on. What we're talking about trouble. The question was asked, how many cities does this and how many cities does that? So let me ask the attorney. How many cities have experienced what we are experiencing? I don't expect an answer from you, Anita. It's really a rhetorical question. When we had the first reading of this forfeiture, I specifically asked that misuse of social media platforms to incite violence, promote misinformation, or undermine public trust be included as one of these areas to be considered. I am again asking tonight that it be included. Misuse of social media platforms to incite violence, promote misinformation, or undermine public trust. What I have a problem with, I have been on the council five years. Five years, it was good enough for a simple majority. Now we got to have a supermajority. So I need the city attorney to make this make sense to me. You see, the bottom line is this. For all the questions that have been asked, say it, forget it, write it, regret it. What do I have to do? What steps need to be taken to have this verbiage added into the forfeiture of a seat?
There would have to be a consensus of three to make the change, and we would have to redraft and bring back. But if there are changes made to this, it won't make the ballot in November due to the deadlines for translation and remitting it to the supervisor of elections office.
Okay, do we have that straight now? Just one time and we'll go back around. Thank you, Mr. Radzik. I just got this to say, it's up to the people. This goes on the ballot. You all vote for it. I've said in these meetings before where people said, no, like for the district vote, nobody wants it. Seventy, more than 70% voted for it. Give it to the people. Let them decide. Period. We don't need to be arguing all this again, because it's not our decision to tell you what to do. You get it on the ballot. You determine whether it goes on or not. Period. Mr. Radzik?
So I agree that our residents should definitely have a say with regards to charter amendments. But if we put this charter amendment on, it has more ambiguity, and it's going to end up getting challenged. The vice mayor talked about wanting some stuff about social media, inciting violence. Definitely something that probably needs to be in there. I think there needs to be things in there that incorporates a lot of the code of conduct. And I really think that this needs to be... Oh, I thought you were going A-OK. So there's definitely a lot of things in the code of ethics that, again, I believe needs to be codified. And after we get it codified, then take it out to the residents and say, this is what the removal process will be and why. Right now, we're not changing anything. We're not changing anything in here. Lacking qualification violates an express prohibition of the charter. And if anyone wants to know what that is, again, that includes interference with administration or holding other offices, convicted of a felony or criminal misdemeanor. We're not changing anything, except a 4-1, if that, and we're leaving out some very important stuff. I am not against this amendment. I just want to make sure that it's inclusive, will stand up. And when Councilwoman Fike started asking questions with regards to, you know, who is, you know, going to bring up these complaints, the complaints right now are limited to what's in the charter. Now, if there was some stuff, for instance, what the vice mayor said, now that would be something different and something to be debated. Or if I'm talking about putting stuff in there from the code of ethics, again, anyone can bring up something about the code of ethics. But right now, the only reason some, someone's going to get to that microphone is to say that such-and-such violated the charter and what we're allowed to do, or criminal. We don't need, we don't need proof that someone was convicted of a felony or a misdemeanor. We don't need to worry about the qualifications. Well, actually, that's the only thing that we would know. And we would know that if Mike Radzik moved into District 4, I've just forfeited my seat because now I'm District 4. This is just not specific enough to hold up. And I think, again, for the last time, get an ordinance, get it codified, and make sure that ordinance, again, is what gets referenced in the amendment that it is that we're trying to do.
Thank you for your opinion. Ms. Fike?
I talked about this last week, and I will say that, again, we continue to grind to a halt the city business. I find it unacceptable. We're not focusing on real issues. We've got aging infrastructure, a town-town that sorely lacks attractiveness, a surge in rooftops over retail. Time and taxpayer dollars are being wasted on political distractions. And Groveland deserves better leadership that prioritizes progress over pettiness. The residents want results, not theatrics. Thank you.
Ms. Carol?
Hello? Is this going to work? There we go. There was a court case. It showed a flaw in our system. It's not necessarily all about you.
Vice Mayor?
We wouldn't have political dis-
We wouldn't have political distractions and pettiness if hatefulness in words had been perhaps stated and not written. To move along, sweep things under the rug like things haven't happened. If you all don't walk away with anything else tonight, remember, there is a person at the end of your words.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my final comment would be that, I have so many, would be that we don't want to muddy the waters or churn things up or have deception with how this is going. There are, there is a charter, and I would just reflect the charter as like the Constitution, right? And then you have ordinances that are like the Bill of Rights. The charter is overall and in general terms so that the ordinances can then define that, and then those ordinances can be changed. We were told by a judge that we didn't connect the two. Our city attorney figured a way to do it based on what other cities do. I don't care what other cities do except for the language, I care what Groveland does. And if this comes back around again, I'm not waiting a year. We have a good Code of Ethics right now. It spells out pretty much everything, you know, and just go through and read it. It's just that it's not enforceable. It's that it holds no weight. Even though you sign it and pledge to it and put a date on it and can't hold office without signing it, it holds no weight today. We have to give it the weight that it's due. Period. The whole thing under honor, it does not apply legally. I'll just give you, we call Code of Ethics, and so you know where I come from on ethics, and it, and I'm quoting somebody else, the American Institute of Ethics, which used to be in Washington, DC. If you look at this floor, that's what's legal. That's the law. You look at the ceiling, that's moral conduct. You can have, you can operate down here and have the law, or you operate between the ceiling and here on ethical means and ethical things. What is ethical isn't always just what the law says. It goes beyond the law. Our ethics need to do that. Our ethics need to be enforceable. Our ethics determine the values of this community, and we need to move forward with this amendment. And if we need to make anything changed, we can do it in a ordinance as we go through and redo the ethics. That's my final say, and so we'll go through and now ask for public comment.
Jen Eastridge?
My address is protected, Ms. Fike. Thank you. Couple comments, just listening to this. The only way that you can go through statutory to remove somebody is if they're elected. You were appointed. There's a difference. Number two, Raznick, this is all because of what Judy Fike did. Number three...
Please direct all your comments to me.
I apologize, Mayor. Judy Fike was suspended. It was not for the tweets. It was for lying to the public and then abusing her power to drag our IT department into it. If you go back and listen to the audio, that's what your motion was. Number four, the ethics agreement is thrown out. According to the most recent court case, the ethics is thrown out without the charter. That's the reason that we need this added into the charter. Being somebody that was on the charter review board, there was a discussion if we needed to go into that further, and it was decided we didn't because everybody was supposed to sign that ethics agreement and uphold to that ethics agreement. Let's see here, what else? No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael J. Cox?
Michael J. Cox, 167 Bayou Bend. Okay, the first thing, you need to move Statement C to Item B. Statement C is for the forfeiture. I mean, Item B is for the forfeiture, Statement C is for the vacancy. So, you, the statement that you added to Item C is incorrectly and it's in the wrong Because that section is about forfeiture, and you're going through the procedure of why someone would be violating the ethics or anything like that. I think you should vote on the Code of Ethics today, add it to new business, and vote and make it an ordinance today. And then you also need to add the Code of Ethics to the charter. You didn't add the Code of Ethics to the charter, so you still have the same exact problem. You need to add it to the charter. And then after you vote on the Code of Ethics and put it in today, you can bring up as new business, the vice mayor's change. And then you can change the ordinance whenever you feel like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Breedlove?
Keith Breedlove, 154 Balmy Coast. First off, I want to agree with Mr. Raznick, Mr. Mayor, because I didn't see that the charter was tied to the ethics or the ethics were tied to the charter. So, it does not seem that, with the way the referendum was written, that there was that linkage that Mr. Raznick and now Mr. J. Cox have said is there. And I think that definitely needs to be there. I'd like to see this go through, but if it needs to be rewritten to make that explicit, please do so because don't leave any wiggle room on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Traywick?
Amanda Traywick, 117 Blackstone Creek Road. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I agree with what Councilman Raznick said. Whatever you're claiming that she did, Councilwoman Fike, does not fall under what your Code of Ethics, whatever the charter says. It does need to be changed. I agree. If you want to include any other items underneath that, then by all means, that's what you need to do. But in this present case, it is not applicable. And you jumped the gun. That's the way I feel. The council jumped the gun and acted too fast before they did their due diligence and gathered all the information. Everybody has to go through a background check, or they should, and whatever else you do for someone to qualify to be, to run for a council member. I've come to enough of these meetings, and I took a break, but I'm back now because I feel like there's been an adjust done to this woman. There's no division unless you make a division with people. And if you don't make it, it's not there. I have friends of all walks of life, but when I hear in this city council meeting and hear a council member say, can you explain to me what the difference is between a white park and a black park? I was appalled. I could not believe someone would say such a thing. I was a member of the Parks and Rec for some time, and we worked very hard, and trust me, there was no division. The first time I ever came to one of these council meetings, I brought a shovel that I spray painted gold. I put a multicolored ribbon on it, and I said, a park shows no discrimination against anybody, no matter what your background is, what you believe in. It doesn't matter the color of your skin. Parks do not divide people. And I think it's wrong that that comment was made, and I feel insulted by it as being a Park and Rec member when that was stated. And I see you smiling there, Mayor. You must be thinking about something that you're going to have to say back to me, but that's okay. But, you know, whoever pulled up whatever that documentation was and altered it, charges need to be filed against that person. And I'm upset that the city council is going to cost the taxpayers money for doing something that they jumped the gun on and should not have been done until you did your due diligence. And once you do that, I'm on board. You do what you're supposed to do. Follow the proper channels, do the background, but when you did what you did, you were wrong.
Tim Lau?
Is that it?
Mayor, can we make sure we stay on the topic of this amendment, please?
Yes, but I think we started that off-topic discussion. Go ahead. I was kind of wondering. Tim Lau, 623 Neptune Drive, Grove. Mayor, I think it was back in 2012, maybe 13, we had an issue, the city did not allow alcohol at city events. It became a big issue, and every, we had people similar to this, half the room for, half the room against. So, we put it on the ballot. That particular year, the city allowed to, or the people voted to not allow alcohol. As time went on, it changed again. You're in the same predicament, this and the council's in the same predicament on this particular charter amendment. From what I see in the room, you've got half the people for, half the people against. Let the people that pay the salaries, that elected you five, decide. It makes your job easier. It gives the people a voice. What's recently happened is really immaterial. That's not the question here. The question is, and trust me, had we done this when I was in office, there was quite a few people that, there was plenty of grounds to remove, and we couldn't do it. And so, we had to put up with it for a long time. The problem you run into, if you get three people that need to be removed and you can't, you've got a destroyed city, and that happened to me. It sure did. So, let the people that elected you make the decision on this. Write the ordinance afterwards. You can word it in such a manner and use some of Miss Gaines', which I agree with 100% on the social media. The social media has become a worse weapon than a gun. And I hate to say that, but it has. People tear each other to shreds on social media, and they never have to see them, the keyboard warriors. I'm probably considered one of them occasionally because I do take my times with the social media. But it needs to be included. You guys are held to a higher standard. You're sitting at a table, you're representing a lot of people. You're spending, you're collecting a lot of money and spending more than you're collecting, Mr. Hein. But anyway, that's a story for another day. Again, I urge you to go ahead and vote to put this on the charter, let the folks decide, let the people sitting in this room and the rest of the folks that couldn't make it tonight, let them decide. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Robert McDaniel?
I just have a couple of comments that are of concern to me.
Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Robert McDaniel, 301 Misty Haven Drive.
Thank you.
That are concerning to me. And that has to do with the ultimate authority in law of this country. I have heard comments that, to me, seem very clearly to be violating our right to free speech and freedom, to do whatever we want to do. Because I'll challenge any law that violates my rights to do what I want to do. Even if you have a law or a order that says you can't do it, and I believe you violated my rights, I'm going to go to the federal court and say, they won't allow me to do what I want to do. So, I hear you talk about codes, papers, this, that. I'm telling you, you need to look at the Constitution and compare it to what you are having people do and what it is. Believe me, the Constitution will set it right. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. So, one more, one more shot around it. This was just discussion, right? So, we're going to close discussion and then go ahead and ask for our motion to accept this 2025-19.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until such time that we can get the Code of Ethics codified and tied to the charter so that there is no ambiguity. Because the way that the current charter is written, it cannot be done by an ordinance. I can't change and say, okay, someone misused their office to do this and therefore we're going to forfeit it. No. I only can forfeit for what is in the charter. Or, or, when we get the Code of Ethics reconfigured, because that was kind of sort of rushed into place. It was meant to have a starting point when we put it out there back in 2017 or whatever. So, again, this, that needs to include what Miss Gaines wanted in there, and it needs to include, again, some specificity, and it needs to go back to the Charter Review Committee, and it needs to come back before us.
Do we have a second? That was your motion, right?
Yes, that was my motion to table and send it back to the Charter Review.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Do I have a motion and a second? Do I have, we'll go ahead and call the vote?
Councilmember Raznick, how do you vote?
I vote to motion to table. Table.
Yeah. Councilmember Fike?
I also vote to motion, to table the motion. That's an aye.
What's the number, Carol?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Nay.
Mayor Keough?
Nay. Motion to table defeated. Now, we'll go on to a motion to accept 2025-19. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept referendum ordinance 2025-19.
A second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes.
Or any further discussion? I'm sorry. Any further public discussion? No, we have none? Go ahead.
Councilmember Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Nay.
Councilmember Raznick?
Nay.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item G, Resolution 2025-40. Would you please read the ordinance?
Resolution 2025-40, approving FDEP-SRF adoption of Clean Water Plan for the North Water Reclamation Facility, WRF, dated July 9, 2025, prepared by Water and Current for the implementation of wastewater system improvements.
Thank you. And TJ, do I hand it to you?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, TJ Fish, Director of Transportation and Public Works. Couple of introductory points. One of them is, I want to start with, why are we bringing this facility's plan before you tonight? And I want to start with, Groveland's really unique. We have something that not every community of our size has, that's two wastewater plants. So, for better or for worse, we're 10 miles long, north to south, six miles wide, wedged in between all of our neighbors, and we have two wastewater facilities. One of those is currently under construction to expand and to modernize it. And that's because we could. We had enough room, and from a financial standpoint, modernizing that plant and expanding it made good financial sense. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection agreed, and we have $11 million of grant... of grant funding with another $2 million appropriation from the state legislature pending to be transmitted to Groveland, and then a financing plan that has very favorable interest rates to do that at a considerably lessened burden to our users that pay into the utilities. Then there's the Norton Plant, also an aged plant, started in the 70s as a package plant, last expanded, I believe, in 2005, '06. And that one, the evaluation was, this is not one to go put a lot of money in to modernize, and you certainly cannot expand it, certainly not easily. Could you do it? A lot of money later, possibly. So we started pursuing. Well, what do we do about this Norton Plant? So in the same week, in March of 2024, there were two major announcements made by the state of Florida that benefited Groveland. One of them was full construction funding to realign State Road 50. It's turning out to be over $115 million investment by the state in our downtown. That was amazing news to hear that. And that project starts construction next year. The other announcement was, Groveland is now awarded $45 million in grant funding, 25 for drinking water projects, which is paying for a new water treatment plant in the north, and the other grant, $19.8 million, to go toward a new, modern wastewater treatment facility. So with that, tonight's presentation is solely about the fact that in order to even get to the next step, which is DEP's hearing, that's the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, coming up on August 13th, in order for them to consider Groveland to go ahead and allocate those funds, not just award the grant, but now we're going to move toward a grant funding agreement, you have to have updated your clean water, which really means taking the dirty water and making it clean. So that's your sewer, that's your reclaimed water. That plan, once it's updated by tonight's action, you're fully eligible for the grant, and so we're going to give you a presentation just summarizing the terms of the plan update and how that project will evolve. And we're certainly not asking you to approve any type of financing plan of any kind. We just need to do the prerequisite to keep that grant opportunity in place. So I'd like to say I wrote this whole thing, but that would not be sincere. We have a whole team working on this with Water and Curran. We have Justin Demello with Water and Curran here this evening that's partnering with us. We're going to present this information to you. Between Justin and I, when he's done, we'll answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, I'm Justin Demello. I'm a vice president, professional engineer with Water and Curran. Water and Curran's been the city's partner here in all things water wastewater operations, planning, funding, and engineering for probably the better part of seven years that I've had the opportunity to be in front of you today. This, as TJ mentioned, is the culmination of sort of, you know, the next steps for Groveland. We've got an aging wastewater treatment facility to the north and dating back to, I guess it was Hurricane season 2022 at this point, there was a supplemental appropriation of grant money that went unused from those storms, and Water and Curran identified an opportunity to address some vulnerabilities in the systems, right? Hardening the systems, preparing them for future storms, which was that $19.8 million grant that TJ referenced associated with this project. So in total, vulnerabilities identified, two cap grants, meaning the maximum a city could get for water and wastewater projects was achieved for the city of Groveland and updating their infrastructure. So with that, I'll walk you through this presentation, really to describe this facilities plan. This is really nothing about growth, right? This is truly vulnerabilities to existing assets, so replacing assets one for one, not necessarily factoring in and throwing dollars around to, hey, how do we pay for growth or the next development? This is truly about impact to ratepayers and taking that burden off of the existing ratepayers to improve facilities, make them more vulnerable towards, less vulnerable to future storms. So I don't know if this is going to work, but if not, we can proceed through. So this slide here really describes the public participation process. As mentioned, we will give a presentation. We will welcome that public comment and council consideration towards a resolution, moving the planning document forward into subsequent design and ultimately construction phases. So the $19.8 million, a portion of that was used, a small portion of that was used for the planning study, which you have here. The next phase of that authorization would be into design. Subsequently, there are additional off-road, off-ramps that the council could consider at any point, that if the project got too expensive for whatever reason, or the council, you know, decided to go in a different direction, there are continuous off-ramps that, again, wouldn't cost the city, you know, any, any funds out of pocket. So I'll walk you through this as the presentation. Today's agenda, we're going to review the wastewater facilities plan or clean water facilities plan, which will discuss those capital projects recommended. The capital needs, we'll discuss alternatives that we considered, the capital costs of those alternatives. We'll also discuss the long-term financial impacts to the ratepayers, the schedule, and any environmental impacts. We'll then welcome public comment, discussion by city council, consideration of resolution, and ultimately, hopefully, an adoption of a facilities planning document. So the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, needs, our goal was to address aging infrastructure at the northern facility, the Sunshine Water Reclamation Facility, or Wastewater Treatment Facility, as you probably know it as. We're going to provide treatment capacity for the current customers, right? Existing wastewater commitments, again, to the city residents, along with the city's commitments to the city of mascot with the inter-local agreement. We've obviously incorporated operations and maintenance efficiencies into this as well, with the primary goal of approving reliability, redundancy, and resiliency against future storm events. So the northern service area that's currently serviced by the Sunshine Wastewater Treatment Facility has a permitted capacity of gallons per day of just under 1 million gallons per day, 0.99 million gallons per day. The current average flows to that facility are about 0.55 or 550,000 gallons per day. And you could see here a list of the developments that are currently approved or under construction that'll be flowing to this facility in the near future or currently flowing to that facility currently. Those eight developments that are listed there, they constitute about 3,700 residential units, of which approximately 1,900 are currently constructed and flowing in that direction, and about 1,800 additional will be flowing in that direction sometime between now and 2031 upon occupancy. So those developments just listed right there, and that 1,800 units are going to constitute approximately an additional flow of 385,000 gallons per day. That'll push that facility, the current facility, to its capacity of about 94% of its capacity by 2031. And that basically assumes that no other developments beyond those are going to be connected to that in that time. So we do feel like the current facility is going to reach its capacity by 2031 or 2032, based on current growth trajectories. So I also find it important to note that the Sampi Service Area located to the south that TJ referenced, which is currently under construction now, is a similar 1 million, 0.99 MGD facility. It's currently operating over its current flow capacity. And so we have a plan to upgrade that facility that's currently in place. They're breaking ground. It is going to be about a two-year construction window. But we feel that with the current commitments to that facility, that facility will also reach its new capacity, even with the upgrade, by 2035, based on current growth. There is an additional 350,000 gallons per day under construction that is projected to be heading towards that facility by 2035. So also, a facility that is maxed out from a site perspective, and something that the city needs to consider, that additional growth in the city will not happen on the southern plant because that site is also restricted. Any new growth and new capacity will have to happen to the north, which is primarily where your open, your space is for growth, since the southern side is impacted by the green swamp. So the alternatives considered for the northern facility that we looked at, first and foremost, were no action, right? Taking no action, the facility remains as is, approximately a 1 MGD facility, would mean no further support for that service area, continue to renew and replace equipment as needed. We described this as the driving, the 20-plus-year-old car, right? Eventually, you start investing too much in it that it ultimately becomes not worth it in time to invest in a new facility. The next alternative we looked at, the one in the middle here, is a new facility. Now, one of the issues that Groveland would face is that you can't turn off an old facility while you build a new one at that same facility. You have committed flows, you have to treat those flows, you can't perform open-heart surgery at that facility while the heart is still pumping and still, you know, the lifeblood of the community. So you need to construct a facility in parallel to that. As TJ mentioned, the Sunshine Facility is site limited. There's wetlands all around it. I think eight acres of the 16 approximately on that site are wetlands, which make them incredibly more expensive to work with and mitigate by land elsewhere to do that mitigation. So you'll also have to build it to adhere to future vulnerabilities. The SOFE requirements for the grant require that the facility be built to the 500-year storm event, which is very different. Most treatment plants are required to be built to a 100-year. A 500-year, which is a stipulation of the grant, is higher, elevated, outside of flood-prone areas. So again, a knock on that, you know, kind of rebuild in a wetland scenario. Also provides limited growth for the future because, again, that site is also, you know, fairly site limited towards, again, how does it, how does the facility grow from there? Because not only do you have a wastewater plant there, but you've got a water plant there and a reclaim facility there as well. Definitely a very limited site. So then comes the last alternative that we considered, a new regional, a new facility to the north, constructing a 1 MGD facility. There's a site, a 25-acre site, high and dry on Villa City Road, that a developer had offered to the city in exchange, you know, for commitments, other commitments to the city. Constructing that new wastewater force main would be required, right? We have to get the wastewater to the new site. We have to connect reclaim back to the reclaim system, so there's lines going in each direction. You've got to bring in power to that new greenfield site. But what the site does, it utilizes, you know, a higher, much safer site. It also supports future growth and, you know, development as future needs of the city come to realization. So a couple of figures, just to show you, on the left-hand side, the Sunshine Facility, the blue that you see there is the wetlands on that site, so fairly low-lying, fairly limited in terms of new growth and expandability of that facility. The New North Facility Site proposed 25 acres on the right-hand side, high, dry. There are no wetlands to note on that site, in that vicinity. So the alternatives considered, and we really look at a lifecycle cost analysis. It's not about the capital cost, right? Because to do nothing, there's very little capital cost. But to fully evaluate, you know, these alternatives, we have to look at what we call lifecycle cost, which is, how much are we going to invest in this asset over the lifecycle of it? So the no action really means reinvest in our existing facility. We need to invest in the old infrastructure that's there, bring it up to current times, as well as there's increased O&amp;M costs with, you know, running an electrical motor that is outdated, you know, in comparison to current standards. So the alternative that we looked at, you know, that would allow the city to use this grant dollar is to either reinvest it in the Sunshine Facility, harden that facility, build on the wetlands, right? Or, you know, commit to those dollars to move the facility to a higher, drier site that's located a few miles away. But both of those alternatives would allow the city to access that grant. But what we've, what we determined through the lifecycle cost analysis is that with the wetlands mitigations and other things on that site and the limitations of that site, the cost of which with that wetland mitigation would still exceed the alternative of the new facility on the greenfield site. So the alternative that we're recommending is the New North Wastewater Treatment Facility. It has a budget of approximately $73 to $75 million. That includes not just construction, but obviously getting utilities to and from, engineering, planning, and, and obviously the O&amp;M component of, well, the full lifecycle cost of that facility. So the selected alternative, Sunshine Facility, has exceeded its design life, must be renewed and modernized to ensure reliability, redundancy, and sustainability. The Sunshine Treatment Facility is surrounded by wetlands, will require wetland mitigation to upgrade. The facility is not centrally located in the overall sense of the available land dedicated to that north utility area. So the Villa City Road location is more centrally located as that area continues to grow and expand. And the New North Facility has the lowest lifecycle cost that we evaluated as part of this study. So here you see the summary of costs for this alternative. The New North Wastewater Treatment Facility has an estimated total capital cost of $73 million, with an annual cost of O&amp;M of 1.5 million. Based on the Raffetellis Rate Study that was completed in 2024, in which the city moved forward with the rate increase, this program was anticipated in that study. So it does not, as it currently stands, require an existing, a change to the existing rate that was, you know, already previously adopted. So we do not foresee that, you know, as a one-for-one new facility. There was also an environmental assessment done on that site and historical site. There are no known permanent negative impacts associated with that selected alternative or that site, since pipes would be in existing right-of-ways, and the actual site itself was evaluated for environmental and historical elements, and no, none were found. So as far as the project's schedule goes, should the project move forward, we're here in August 2025 doing facility planning. As TJ mentioned, the resolution, if moved forward, would go to the DEP public hearing that would allow the city to access the balance of that 19.5 and change worth of grant that would take that burden off of the ratepayers. There's a hearing in August. From there, you'd get an approval to move into a design phase, at which time the city would go out for solicitations for engineers and subsequently contractors. With that being the schedule of January 2026, we feel that design would be completed in about a year to 16 months, so looking at May 2027, and then going out to bid in subsequent construction and close out at the end of summer of 2029, which would be ahead of that time where we feel that the facility would be, you know, at that 2031 impact of being fully, fully used. So with that, I will ask that you consider the adoption of this facilities plan via resolution for continued SRF participation under WW350660. Continue, that would allow the city to continue with the design activities funded under the existing supplemental appropriation for Hurricane Fiona and Ian Grant. And from here, the city would ultimately need to, you know, then select a project delivery method, design, bid, build, design, build, and initiate an engineering contract with the selected firm to advance the design towards that facility. So I will officially open it up for questions.
Thank you. We can start with Ms. Fike.
Thank you. I don't know, this question might be more addressed to TJ. I'm not sure, TJ, if I can move this in. So my biggest question probably is, if we don't approve this resolution, am I correct? Will lose that $19.8 million grant? Is that my understanding?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Fike, yes. In order to be qualified for consideration at this upcoming hearing, we would have to formally submit this facilities plan to qualify.
Okay. So if we don't submit it, if we decide that we don't want to approve this tonight, we lose 19, almost $20 million on this grant? Where would those funds come from?
In the absence of the grant, you would have to go to traditional sources, which always start with user rates, impact fees, and possible low-interest loans.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you. Mr. Razak?
This question is probably for Mr. Maslow. How many new homes with annexations are projected for that area? How many new homes with annexations are projected for that area?
Does this work? Okay. Here, members of the council. Does that work now? There you go. Okay. Thank you. Just for that area, Villa City is over 7,500 residential units. That also includes a mix of uses. There's an additional 6,000 units above the Turnpike in the Bright Hill area that would be using this facility. We have a conceptual plan that would have about half those number of units, closer to 3,000 units, roughly about 3,200, with some other developments you're looking at well north of 10,000 units.
We need that plant. Not a trick question. Anita Zeraci Carver, with us approving those homes and annexing in several other parcels, that all comes with an explicit or implicit guarantee that we have the services available for that annexed When we actually approve an annexation, we do so that says that we will have water, sewer, fire, police available. Is that correct?
You have, they have to meet at some point during the development process the concurrency requirements to say that you have the ability to serve them once they're seeking more of a development order. You're saying you have services, you can serve them, but it's not to the extent when you annex them as it is when you're issuing a development order.
And how much of this is going to go ahead and service the existing areas, meaning Wilson Lake, or Trilogy, or anything else on that side of the town?
So let me be very clear on what's in front of you. The plant currently today, based on some of the most recent monthly report, was functioning at 57% capacity, so that's approximately 570,000 gallons going through it. The current projects, we are not talking about catalyzing Villa City PUD or major development north of the Turnpike. This initial Phase 1 that's tied to this grant opportunity is to handle the fact that your existing customers along Wilson Lake Parkway predominantly, Trilogy, Arborwood, Estates at Cherry Lake, all of those different villages, they are all benefiting from the wastewater treatment at the Sunshine Facility, which is at 57%. Bearing in mind, we are currently actively moving forward on redirecting flows from Trinity Lakes on State Road 19, more than 600 homes. Those flows will be going to the Sunshine Plant. And why? Because your Sampey Southern Plant is at capacity today, so this is a stopgap measure while we're under construction to free up capacity at Sampey. But that's now putting the Sunshine Facility at 70% capacity. So those other projects that were mentioned have all been approved. And the reason why were they approved? Because we had capacity and they met the concurrency law. So Bright Hill Phase 1 is about to start construction. That is the only development that's new north of the Turnpike. It's a Phase 1 only. Rainwood across Wilson Lake Parkway from Trilogy, under construction. Hidden Ridge and Meadow Point in Estates at Cherry Lake off of Wilson Lake Parkway, under construction. So it's not the future growth that we have in the plan, it's what's happening in front of us today that creates the sense of urgency.
All right. Looking at this, it looks like if we do nothing, that's actually the most expensive option. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's it.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Just a few. How many, how many homes will this, this $72 million service? How many units?
Total units, roughly, you've got 1,800 new connections that are coming in to bring you to 94%. So you probably have about 3,000 prior to that, so just 5,500, 5,600 total units.
And we have 10,000 coming online. Is that what I hear? And our comp plan says, how many, what's our comprehensive plan, any kind of limits? How many? What is that ceiling at?
The comprehensive plan predicted a lower amount than our actual entitlement research showed. So in terms of counting all the city-approved zonings, we have roughly 20,000 additional residential units that are currently zoned, not all of them necessarily platted yet or have capacity reservations, but that's the amount that we're really looking at for the entire utility service area.
Is there, is there any other alternatives for builders to do? I heard the term "package plant." Is there any other way that builders accomplish taking care of their developments without burdening the city?
There are options that developers would gravitate toward if they learned that they could not do their project because of lack of the wastewater capacity. The concern that staff wants to emphasize is that it is your City of Groveland utility service area. You have the right of first refusal. And once a developer decides to control their own destiny, that takes away the ability of the City of Groveland to control your own destiny, and it also unravels the financing plan in the RAFTELUS study that relies on those impact fees and future user rates to help pay for the needs. One of the things I want to emphasize about this grant opportunity and the Phase 1 that we're actually considering to bring back to the city council in the form of a grant agreement and low-interest loan agreement, is to do a modest Phase 1 to be able to address what's in front of you while controlling the capacity of what we're able to offer so that developers have to negotiate and have to pay in the full amount in order to be able to move forward. That's part of the strategy.
Very good, TJ. Let me, let me try to, because you always translate for me when we're out in meetings. We know we have this capacity need. We're building to half of the capacity need. Where we are today with Sampey and everywhere else is because it kept getting put off and put off and put off until we became crisis. And if we would have done it before, it would have cost us a lot less. Today is going to cost us a lot less than 10 years from now. What is, what is, what does the full plan look like? If we are already committed to, we have 25,000 people now and 10,000 or 3.11, that's 55,000 people, what does that look like? And how do we make sure that we're not building a small plant right now and then all of a sudden, you know, I don't know the economics of size, but it would seem to me that we should be looking at the size and really taking a strong look. And I don't know if Rathgeller and all that had this, because I remember the comp plan being lower, too. I don't know if they were using the same figures that I thought, or the new figures, but are we, are we approaching this knowing that we've got a big boulder coming at us? And is this the right plan?
Yes, Vice Mayor, members of council, I think the important components that we've been able to achieve so far is you own a 25-acre site. That's the City of Groveland property. That helps immensely. It's greenfield, high and dry, as Justin described, that's why we're getting the grant opportunities. We have that property available. If we were to start a Phase 1, your staff is going to recommend to consider a minimum of a 2 million gallon Phase 1, and that Phase 1 would be designed, expandable, to be able to then go to three, four, beyond, ultimately planned for six million gallons a day.
Okay. My last, my last question, and just so we can get back together, your daily, your daily unit usage is how many gallons per home that you're factoring in?
We factor in about 210 gallons per ERU, equivalent residential unit, which is 3.09, which is your current census, per household, at about 63 to 70 gallons per person, per household.
Thank you. Do we need to go back around? Mr. Radzick?
The, you said 210?
210 is the number, yes, sir.
How does that relate to St. John's River Management's qualifications in conservation and whatnot? How does that relate?
You're referring to like DEP standards?
I'm looking at what the St. John's River Management basically say we should be using per household.
Okay, yeah. So engineering standards, a lot of times use 110 gallons per day, you know, per person, so three-bedroom house, 330. We're using more real-time data, you know, what Groveland's experiencing, obviously, in their plant flows. We operate the treatment plants daily, so we have a pretty good idea. So we're bringing that number down, we're around 210. St. John's is lower, but that's really, St. John's monitors more water usage, you know, through the meter, not necessarily wastewater flows. On the wastewater side, we've got to factor in for, you know, INI, which is inflow and infiltration coming in the ground, all the technical geeky stuff that you guys probably don't know, but we have a factor of safety, again, based on our real-time numbers and usage in the city currently.
So we're not going to be getting too close to our CUP because this is all wastewater, so we don't have to worry about that.
This is, this is wastewater purely, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Public comment?
Dan Anderson. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. For the record, I am Dan Anderson of 230 Silver Maple Road, an eight-year resident of Groveland. I am appearing before you this evening to give you my wholehearted recommendation for council adoption of Resolution 2025-40, adopting the Clean Water Facilities Plan for the North Water Reclamation Facility prepared by Witterd and Curran. While the adoption of the facilities plan does not obligate the city to additional financial commitment at this time, it does allow us to continue on our path to provide wastewater capacity to meet the demands of reasonably expected growth over the next several years. As we are all quite aware, we are in a very high-growth phase of our city, and continuation of our planning process without delay is crucial. In particular, I would like to support the recommended alternative, which is the construction of a brand-new water reclamation facility on the 25-acre vacant parcel now owned by the city. There are many advantages to this large vacant location, which have already been presented by WNC staff. From an engineering perspective, the ability to construct new facilities in an unhindered fashion on a vacant site is very considerable. When I was working as a consultant several decades ago, the design engineers in our firm would conduct constructibility reviews and operability reviews by expert staff in those fields. They would consider any potential constraints or impediments in constructing and operating the new facility. Having to construct new facilities, this existing Sunshine Plant site, and then integrating them into the operations of the overall facility could be likened to a cardiac surgeon performing open-heart surgery on a patient whose heart is beating and must continue to do so throughout the entire procedure and hopefully continue for many years thereafter. Previously, I had a concern that utilizing the 25-acre site donated to the city by the Villa City developer might incur an obligation on the part of the city. Having recently read the transfer deed, however, it appears to me the $10 payment the city made for the parcel was the only obligation, and the city has clear and unencumbered title to it. Since I am not an attorney, you would of course want our city attorney or designated council to confirm that understanding. I think, let me just add in something here beyond my prepared point, since I have two and a half minutes left. Forty years ago, I was a Justin DeMello, and I was working in our firm's Fort Lauderdale office. We were doing the Broward County North District Regional Wastewater System. And what the county did was to build this huge plant, 60, 80 million gallon a day plant. And all of the western cities in northern Broward County converted their package plants to master pump stations and conveyed that flow. They pumped it through a manifold of force mains systems to the North District Regional Plant. Economies of scale are tremendous when it comes to utility system. The larger the facilities, the lower the cost per ERU. When I was doing this work, you know, 40 years ago, the variable costs of operations were about 15 to 20%. That was electricity, chemicals, and solids management. The rest of the costs were fixed or semi-fixed, and so you could spread those among all of your customer base. You know, there's a saying in the utility industry, it's all about, there's only three things you need to know: customer base, customer base, customer base. The more, the merrier, especially when it comes to cost per customer. So that was a very successful utility system up there, and I see I'm out of time, and I thank you for giving me your attention this evening on this vitally important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan, thanks for the continued research and advice you should give us. We really appreciate it.
Tim Lauks.
Mayor, Council, Tim Lauks, 623 Neptune Drive, Groveland. If I heard correctly, it was a council member, Raznick, or the mayor had asked the flow that would be coming from each house. And if I heard correctly, I believe he said 200 gallons?
210.
I find that a little exorbitant, considering that St. John's limits 150 gallons per day, per home. So I'm trying to figure out how we can flow 200 gallons when we're only getting 150. Actually, the base on that statewide is 83 gallons of sewage per home. That's the average across the board. I talked with Witterd Curran during the utility presentations a few months back. They informed us of the 63 gallons. Matter of fact, it was after a workshop. They said they're more in the line of 63 gallons. You're talking sewage, you have car washing, lawn watering also coming out of that 150, so it's impossible to flow 200 gallons when you only have 150 to start out with. So what I'd like to recommend to the council is to table this item until the staff can bring back the actual figures. And the reason I say that, that allows you to size your plant. The gentleman before me said, "Big plants are great, providing you have the flow. If you don't have the flow, they're a nightmare. You end up feeding them groundwater to keep them running." Many of us ran into that very problem. So you need to make sure you're sizing the plant correctly, not too small, not too big. It's hard to predict that because development and sewage flow is based on demand, and demand is based on how many homes the developers build. And if the interest rates remain at 7.1%, it's not going to be too many in the near future. So it's, what we've always done, and the way we've always handled that, we build these plants so they're readily expandable, and you can put in, I don't know what they use in Groveland, but we use in arriation basins, we'd put in one train and another train to make it so easy to expand that it would only take about six months to do so. So I'd really get some more information before I went any further with this and make sure that you guys are headed the right way. We do need a new wastewater treatment plant in the north end. The Sampey, or the Sunshine Plant was inherited from somebody back before I even came to Groveland, and it's been patched back together, so it is time for a new one. But make sure you do this one right instead of we end up in the same position 10 years from now. Mayor, Council, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Justin? That's a, that's a question that may be before we vote. Do you have the reasoning behind the formula of 210? To me, the downside is that we've got 25% more capacity on those figures than on your figures, but what is the, what is the discrepancy between what we can actually allow a house and water and what we're saying that they're using?
Wait for Mr. Fish to arrive, but personally, my house, I don't have a limit to how much water I can use, right? If I run the faucet or there's a leak at my, leak after my meter, right? The meter keeps spinning. So water usage is very subjective, right? There are people that use a lot of water, there are people that use less water, there are people that irrigate their lawns a lot more than others, there are people that don't. All I know is that your current facility, right, is at
that your current facility, right, is at 57% capacity. We're planning for 1,800 more units that are committed to that area, whether they contribute 200 gallons per day or, you know, 100 gallons per day. There's a substantial amount of new development that's coming in that's really just going to allow you to build a one-for-one treatment facility, right? We're not talking about new growth and how much is coming and how much we can accommodate. We're really just taking an old facility offline and building a brand-new facility one-for-one, right? One MGD to one MGD. So that's the best way I can answer that question without diving into a whole lot of, you know, detail.
But you do our plant now, right, so you probably know what our 8,500 homes and how much is going through, what an average is, right, per home? TJ?
Yeah, and that is, Mayor, members of council, that's why we're using the 210 number. Actually, your comp plan policy says we're supposed to use 250 gallons per home, and water is even more than that. So I understand the public comment that was made because I assure you, the state is pushing to conserve and use less water, but the reality is, per home in Groveland, they're sending us about 200 to 210 per home.
Okay. And we're only voting on the design phase and being able to take and go after the, to qualify for the grant, right?
It is completely to secure that grant, and then we would come back to you with the big decisions with a lot more data about the plant project itself. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Do we have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept Resolution 2025-40.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Carroll, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratzek?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Moving on to, you know what, it's quarter to nine. Can we take a five-minute break? So we're going to take a five-minute break. I see people getting up and moving around. Five minutes? Oh, I got it because I need to go. Okay, thank you. Well, we'll call the meeting back to order. We'll continue onward, Resolution 2025-44, approving the reimbursement of cost for South Lake Regional Park.
We don't have to read anything into the record, Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can give a presentation. This is a routine and ordinary resolution. In fact, the mayor and council approved one similarly for the fire station two or three weeks ago. This resolution authorizes the city to make expenses on behalf of a project that you've already approved. We've let the contract, so we're incurring its expenses. What this allows is for us to get reimbursed after we go out for financing.
To get money back?
To get reimbursed. So when we go out for a bank loan or a note to cover the costs, and again, in November of last year, the county commissioners amended the agreement with the city of Groveland for the construction of the South Lake Regional Park to include the increased construction costs along with the financing and interest expenses. So this, again, just allows us to reimburse ourselves through that instrument.
Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. Can I have a motion to accept 2025-44?
I'm moved.
Okay, motion and a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Carroll, seconds. Open for discussion. Mr. Ratzek?
Yeah. Mr. Heine, you possibly made a comment about statement of findings? Did you say that? Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because if you did, I was just going to ask about the whole contaminated site, and when was the last time that it was actually tested? We've had a lot of dirt that's been moved, suspect, so is that something that is possible still?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, but Councilman Ratzek, I'm a little confused by the construction question. Again, this resolution deals with the reimbursement for a project that you've all authorized, and we've awarded the contract.
And that's why I was asking if you said something about a statement of findings, but that's okay. If this is what this is about, then I will leave it as such.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll? Ms. Fike? Vice Mayor? And I have no questions. Open for discussion, public input?
Tim Lauks.
Tim Lauks?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Heine, thank you for your explanation on that. This resolution says it's authorized in the city to expend construction costs for South Lake Regional Park and Mount not to exceed $15,000 in advance of securing permanent financing. First question is, where is the $15 million coming from?
Mr. Heine?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this project is funded through a partnership with Lake County. In November, I believe, or early December of last year, the Lake County Commissioners approved an intergovernmental agreement authorizing the payment of future proceeds to the city of Groveland toward the construction of South Lake Regional Park. The amount includes the capital as well as the financing.
So what I think we're saying is, we pay for it, they pay us back. It's a pass-through? Is that the simplest way to put it? That's just a pass-through account?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. My next question...
...for the benefit of the public. Again, several years ago, Lake County had always envisioned a regional park at that location. The county was averse to any debt instruments, so they were going to employ a pay-go, or pay-as-you-go methodology, using infrastructure surtax, sales taxes, to pay for it over time. What this agreement allows is for the city of Groveland to incur the debt but repaid over the years, including interest through that revenue stream from the county.
And so the county will be ongoing every year, right? I mean, we start out, they pay us back, we build some, they pay us back, we build some. So this is the max, but we're not taking out $15 million and putting it in the bank, right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, we just opened bids. I don't know the total project cost. That was on a previous agenda. I apologize. This is simply allowing us to get reimbursed for costs. We will go out for a debt instrument for the $15 million which will be paid over time from the county.
Secured by the county.
That's the question, yeah. So it is, excuse me, it is secured by the county?
Secured by the county.
Secured by the county.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all the covenants and restrictions and knowing the understanding that the speaker may have about municipal operations, when you read the fine print, there'll be backstops, covenants that will tie it to future ad valorem, revenue streams with potential intercepts. But yes, the debt service and the amount is married to the capital project, plus the interest expenses tied to a revenue stream from the county over a period of years.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for clearing that out. So in essence, we're loaning the county money until they collect enough to pay us back with an interest rate.
Thank you, Mr. Lauks. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. No more public input. Can we go ahead and call for the vote?
Councilmember Ratzek, how do you vote?
I vote aye, since it's secured by the county.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to our original new business, consideration of approval ordinance 2025-11, Palisades Comprehensive Plan Amendment, first reading.
Consideration of Approval Ordinance 2025-11, Palisades Comprehensive Plan Amendment, first reading. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Groveland, Lake County, Florida, amending the city of Groveland's comprehensive plan pursuant to 163.31871 Florida statutes by amending the future land use plan designation from Lake County Rural Transition to City of Groveland Established Neighborhood on the Future Land Use Map for the herein described property consisting of 0.6582 plus-minus acres, authorizing the city manager to amend said comprehensive plan, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date, and providing for the forwarding of this ordinance to the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept consideration for approval 2025-11?
Can we maybe see a presentation?
Well, discussion, under discussion, yeah. If you want to make a motion and discuss, fine, you know. But if we go ahead and do the motion, then we can discuss.
That's fine. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2025-11, the Palisades Comprehensive Plan Amendment, first reading.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, discussion. Your motion. Well, usually we go through here, but we'll go ahead and do the presentation first. Thank you, Mr. Ratzek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me, first of all?
No.
No? Okay. The green light is on. How about this? Does that work? Oh, okay, one of them works. That's good. Next up in the process, we need to make sure the slides work. There we go. All right, we're two for two. Just first and foremost, we're here to discuss the old maintenance shed at the Palisades HOA, old golf course property. Because of the nature, there's two items on the agenda for a vote tonight. I'm going to present both, just to reduce any kind of complexity. I'm also going to present on a third item, which will be the special exception that goes with the map amendments. That only requires one reading. It will be at your next council meeting, but presenting all three in tandem will make a lot more sense versus in isolation. As a friendly reminder, when you do go to a vote, you'll just be voting on each item at a time individually. So you have two map amendments tonight. One is amending the future land use map, and then the other map amendment is your rezoning. And if you could see the green property in a big green circle right there at the Palisades on the south side of Cherry Lake Road, that is the subject property tonight. The application applicant is Brett Jones, representing, again, the Palisades HOA. The existing future land use... The existing future land use, although it is an annex into the city, it's still Lake County rural and an existing zoning of Lake County PUD. The request is to amend the future land use map and the comp plan from rural to established neighborhood, and also rezoning the property from Lake County PUD, planned unit development to low-density residential. The additional request that goes with that is for a special exception for an office use. And again, the location, the south side of Cherry Lake Road. This is a recent lot split that staff worked on with the property owner, taking a little less than 200 acres and splitting that into two parcels. The parcel tonight that we're talking about is just less than an acre, it's .65 acres. So we're not talking about the whole golf course tonight, just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Hard to miss this building. I think we're all on the same page in this room, that this property needs to be cleaned up. It is a current code compliance case. The question tonight is how we go about cleaning up the property through the Palisades HOA. One of the options that we explored before was just simply to demolish, scrape, and clean the property. The second option would be for the HOA to sell the property to one of the current homeowners and use it for an office use with no customer interface, but instead of demolishing it, they would be renovating the facility. We held a community meeting back in April at the Palisades Clubhouse for this property. Conversation was based around that renovation slash revitalization of the existing structure, and using it as an automotive professional office, having no retail component there. The way it's explained from the applicant, it's an internet-based sales with no customer involvement on site. The homeowner would specifically using it as their private office space. The improvement would include new landscaping, roof, repainting of the building, and more. So we really heard from two sides, I think probably represented tonight at this meeting. You heard, we heard from Palisades homeowners wanting to renovate the property, wanting to make the sale, wanting to get to public hearing, enhancing the neighborhood, cleaning it up, but getting council approval for this special exception that would allow them to renovate the structure and not demolish it. We also heard from some county residents to the north of the site wanting to just demolish the property. Not waiting for a renovation, but just getting it cleaned up and not having any kind of potential future issues with traffic at that intersection. Here are two maps that I'll show you that will show the proposed changes. The first, changing this specific site, the .65 acres, to established neighborhood on the future land use. And then changing that section of the property to low-density residential. You have some moderate density residential to the north, agriculture beyond that, and additional planned unit development just northwest of the property. And again, that zoning would allow for you to entertain a special exception use for office. The improvements would include new paint for the entire building, installing new windows, doors, roof, lighting on the building, new landscaping and irrigation, and then removal of the existing fence and installing a code-compliant fence, such as a black vinyl chain link. Staff recommendations, if you go ahead and make the approvals for the map changes and the special exception. Staff recommends approval with following conditions. Office shall operate only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Use shall be limited to professional office operations with no outdoor storage or commercial vehicle parking. Site development shall be subject to our site development plan review and comply with applicable designing, design and zoning standards in the Community Development Code. Comply with our Florida vernacular standards in the code, including architecture and signage. We understand from the applicant that one sign is required for state wall. We did change some of the time constraints, because what we wanted to avoid is approving this, and then the building sitting in isolation in perpetuity with no action taken. We wanted to make sure the time was of the essence, but we did receive feedback from our planning and zoning board that did vote to unanimously recommend approval for both the map changes and the special exception. They were concerned with some of the time constraints and recommended a little bit more time to be realistic, to make sure that it's completed in a good time. A building permit within 150 days of approval of this resolution. Construction must commence within 180 days or within 30 days of issuance of the building permit. And then also, construction must be complete within 15 months of approval of this resolution. Additional recommendations that we received from P&amp;Z. Subject property is to remain a one-story building. Now, from a technicality with the code with low-density residential, that would allow for a three-story at 35 feet. The condition would limit it to one story. We addressed the time constraints. And then staff is also researching and exploring different landscaping buffers along Cherry Lake Road, and we included a slide on that. And here they are. And I'd be happy to review these in detail if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I guess... 2.5 canopy trees, is that 2.5 calipers?
That's two and a half trees per 100 linear feet.
What's the caliper?
So we're looking at about roughly 250 feet of this property. We'll hear more from the applicant Brett Jones on that. Minimum caliper trees in our landscape code currently is three inches at present. Okay? Idea is if the property is renovated, to make sure it's properly screened with landscaping for the residents to the north.
Do we have a presentation from?
I believe we have Brett Jones in the audience to answer any questions he might have.
Would they like to make a presentation or just answer questions?
I think he's okay.
Brett Jones, 700 Alma Street, Clermont. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Just going to sit down. Are you going to ask now or later, it's your council?
Designer, is the person that's designing all this here?
That person's not been hired yet. There's going to be somebody that is on the list of people that know how to design.
Okay, all right, well, let's just go ahead with our questions while he's up there, Mr. Radzick?
Yes, so the first question I had written down was the, what is going to be the enforcement that this stays a professional office operation? So if you sell it to me, what's stopping me from putting something undesirable in there?
That's a great question. We worked pretty, I don't know what the right way to say this, back and forth with staff to narrowly tailor it, because that's the first question that essentially planning staff asks, which is how do we keep it for this one very narrow use so that we can check off all the boxes for the concerns, which are legitimate concerns, by the way? So the recommendation was to come in with the recommendation, or, excuse me, with the request, with the special exception. So if I were to go there and want to start something else that wasn't this narrowly tailored, I'd be out of compliance, and that's code violation, and you can shut me down. You'd have the normal hearings you have for code violation.
So that's going to get, Anita, that's going to get written in to whatever agreement we have, that it is and will always be a professional office?
That's in the resolution you'll consider at the next meeting, which is a special exception use, and it has conditions, and it has an enforcement provision.
I went to the questions and answers a couple of months ago, jeez, it sounds like forever. And at the time, they talked about a warehouse or storage. Is that now off the table, since this is a professional office operation?
Yes, yeah.
And the last question, I was, again, with regards to the landscaping. Again, the canopy, I'm sorry, the caliper of the tree is probably the most important, since it's going to be a more season tree and will instantly have some barriers and otherwise. So do we know what the caliper of the tree is going to be yet?
What I committed the owners to is to be inconsistent with the new yard pattern book, which is what your staff is working through, adoption in the future Groveland code, so we're fine doing that. And so I don't know what the answer to your question is the answer to. But it's whatever is the recommendation in that code is what they're going to comply with. And that's, I think, where a lot of this comes from.
Okay.
Caliper, but also preserving the existing trees.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions, the most important one was the enforcement, and Anita's already answered that.
Thank you, Ms. Feig?
Thank you for coming this evening. Just real quick, and I know Mike kind of touched on this, but if we can go back one or two slides, and this may be it. So here, item number two says, "Use shall be limited to professional office operations with no outdoor storage or commercial vehicle parking." I too was at the same event over at Palisades that Mike attended. And I've had some discussions since then, that, looking at the building, there are those like garage bays, whatever you want to call it. There was some discussion that the owner was looking to store his own, like a small boat or something there. Is that off the table now that I read this with no outdoor storage or commercial vehicle parking?
I don't know what the owner is going to do with it, but this wouldn't prohibit if you had a, what do people that age have Corvette collections, if you're a baby boomer, right? You got all these classic Corvettes, if you want to park them in the garage, I don't think there's a prohibition on that, I don't think you would care if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so...
But that's about outside stuff.
Right, so the no outdoor storage means outside of the facility itself, if I'm interpreting that correctly. So if he wants to then, as you nod your head, is that what he's, if he wants to use those bays to put a car in or his boat?
Is during the renovation process, they're properly enclosed as part of the structure? That'd be okay?
Okay, thank you for the clarity, that's all I have right now.
Ms. Carroll?
I think my biggest concern was future use. Like, this doesn't sound so bad, but I think it has to be ironclad, that they can't change the use six months, six years, 50 years down the road. I don't think it's a great spot for a commercial anything, it's in the middle of all residential, so...
You didn't ask a question, but I'll address it because it was like implied a question. So to use it another way, it'd have to come in front of you or your successors.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Are there any consequences if construction is not completed within 15 months?
Yes.
What are they?
Kind of looking at attorney de Rossi, but it's out of, it's out of compliance, so it's like if you don't comply with the code, so it's a code compliance violation, I think?
Right, the special exception use would go away, and so they would have their zoning, which would be all they're allowed to do is whatever the zoning allows.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back a couple more slides to the beautiful, keep going, right there?
Yes.
Now, the, I got to drive this in my truck, and there's a tremendous drop-off from the road down. It's very hard when you're coming up with, I mean, Mr. Hein with his little car, or Ms. Feig, you can see, but with a truck, you can't see that well because you're up like this. And I started thinking about it, and plus, we put trees, you know, on that berm there, and it's going to be even more of an issue. This is owned by the Palisades. And when I look at this map, is there no way that that access and egress could come through Palisades instead of coming on that road?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. I don't, don't know, but there's, you know, to bring it up to city standards, I think would be a great expense, and there's a public road right there. So the way that it works is if you own property on a road, you have access to that, and it's already an existing lot. So I don't know, other than there's already an apron, and it was used that way for a very long time as the maintenance shed. But I know what you're talking about with respect to the curve.
Yeah, it seems like one, it's not, because there's a lot of things that, like buses and things, that school buses were there this morning, but, you know, doing their practice rounds. But I just, when I looked at it, I said, well, you know, it looks like the way that they got the vehicles to do the maintenance on the golf course, that maybe that could be a road.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It would sure solve all the problems, because then we could landscape the whole thing. And it could lighten up on some of those restrictions that they have, because then they come under the HOA of Palisades and...
Well, not necessarily, but that's not the point, I get your point. If you want to develop, if you want to make this a development project, that's how I make money, so let's do it. But I don't know if your, how your staff would feel about that. I think that's a conversation with Public Works as well as planning. I don't know if that adheres to really good planning principles, and you have an elite-level planner over there that you could maybe ask him. But that's, it's not part of the sale of the property, so there's no easement, essentially would be an easement. So that's not, that has not been contemplated, it's not to say that it can't be.
But the easement is owned by Palisades, right? I mean, this whole thing is owned by Palisades right now.
There is no easement, you'd have to create one.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. We have a motion, or do we have any public input?
Deborah Herring. Your microphone didn't work. Your microphone.
What worries about FedEx trucks and stuff going?
Deborah Herring, 9654 Spring Lake Drive, in the Palisades. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. I was just thinking, if I were home tonight, I'd be watching Ninja Warriors, but you're a whole lot more fun. This has been very interesting. I'd like to thank you for spending your evening here. I had no idea how long of an evening you would have, but you, I sincerely appreciate it. As members of the Palisades community, we are here to ask your approval to sell this small piece, .6 acres of land with this really ugly building on it. That needs to be restored. We are also here to acknowledge the strong relationship that we have developed with the City of Groveland. When you look at the staff here, we know them so very well. When we, after the city purchased the old golf course and our neighborhood for the water rights required to support your incredible growth, you worked closely with us to allow the purchase of the land and buildings of the property. This includes the maintenance building that we're talking about tonight. Since then, we have worked tirelessly, with over 100 volunteers spending thousands of hours to restore, preserve, and improve the property and the buildings. We finished our clubhouse, if you haven't seen it, you should come visit. And we're working on the activities center. I'll have a few pictures here that I'm going to hand out as soon as I finish, so that you can kind of see the before and after of our clubhouse. It too looked like that building, except maybe a little worse, if you can remember. Think that, I took my grandchildren up there to see it, they were terrified, I had to take them home. It was awful. It too had a hole in the roof, and rats, and everything else. Now it's beautiful. We're currently working on our activities building. And before we do any of this, we have to ask our 521 members what they want us to do, what they recommend. So we sent out a survey actually today, having to do with the activities committee, I mean, activities building. We also have received many, many requests from the homeowners regarding the restoration of the maintenance building of property. And that's what we were going to next, it's a slow process. Many, many of our homeowners own recreational items such as boats, and campers, and RVs, and jet skis, and all these things that can't be stored in their driveway or in their yards. They've requested that, before all this happened, that we restore and expand the maintenance building so that they could park their things there, which makes sense. Right now, they're having to park them way off, and then go get them, bring them home, and then be able to leave. They would have had an electronic key access, the same as our lake property that we have now. Unfortunately, due to pressure from outside the community, we are now in a position where we need to move more quickly than we could if we were just doing it ourselves. This is why we would like to sell the property and allow the new owner to quickly bring the property and the landscape up to code. And that is very... And that is very important to us. We want this to be beautiful, too, when it's finished. We're trying to make everything we touch with these buildings and the property itself beautiful. Throughout the purchase and restoration of the former golf course property and several buildings, we have relied heavily on the experience of Groveland specialists, your attorneys, everyone here. The partnership we share has certainly benefited our community, and we appreciate your help. The Palisades community is unique and it's beautiful. And we will continue to partner with the city to keep it that way. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Yes, send it to the mayor. I have before and after pictures of our clubhouse. So you can see that it looked just as bad as this current building.
Make sure the clerk gets a copy, please, the city clerk.
Bob, right here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, thank you very much. Just a second, sir. Did you fill out a, okay, she'll be calling names right up, right up here.
Susan Ducey.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Susan Ducey. I live at 139 Harvest Gate Boulevard, Groveland. And I'm here to say that we are against having the zone change. We are against having an office there. And we have some problems with what's going on. First of all, if there is an office building there, it's going to be set in an area that is down below and would be hard to see. Right now, we can see that with the building, there has been crime, there's been vandalism, and there's been graffiti. Now, I've lived in cities where the graffiti often is the markings of territory for gang members. We don't know that. We don't know who did it. But we know that that building has created crime in our area, and we won't be able to see it from the road. If we have an office there, then we're going to also have that problem of it being down low, but it'll also be empty every night. When it's empty every night, that's a security risk for us in the neighborhood because the traffic flow is low at night. There's not that many cars going by. It's, it's not going to be easily seen from the road, like if it was on 27 or something, where more cars are going by. So it would be empty. So that, we already know that there's vandals and maybe gang members coming there. If there's an empty office building, that's going to be easy pickings to come at night and go in there where you can't see them. Also, there's going to be a light pollution because there's going to have to be lights. So even with the ones that just point down, it still will illuminate. So people will be able to have light on all night, I guess, at their house. So we also have a problem that there is a school bus stop there. We went to the planning and zoning, and they said, oh, it is a problem because the kids are out there and it could be dark. So I asked the school district to move the bus stop. So I don't know if they did, if they're going to move the bus stop. Don't know where they put the children. It's obviously the safest place for them, right where it is. Also, at the planning and zoning meeting, they gave them everything that they asked for, regardless of our concerns, legitimate concerns. And after we had made our statements about why we were concerned about having an office there, Mr. Jones said, well, we could have asked for commercial instead of low-density residential. Well, I want to know, how did he know that they would have given him commercial if he'd have just asked for it? And also, a member of the Palisades, the president, said, well, you can look at a nice office building, or you could look at this building. And I don't know how that's my only choice, is to look at blight or to look at a nice office building. Also, we just heard that the Palisades has fixed up their property and that they're looking at, and they're saying how they want to make ours so beautiful that we're looking at. And yet, why, if they really cared about how it looked to us, why didn't they do ours first? Because that was affecting another neighborhood. It's a place where children are, and we have families. I mean, I'm old. I'm 72 years old. We moved into this place because it was going to be our last home. Quiet, passing rural, a golf course across the street, you know, and we thought, well, we'll die in this house. This is it. We're not moving again. But now we have offices. Then there's, there's going to be a lot next to that. Are they going to ask for commercial for that? And apparently, they may get it. I mean, I don't know if it's in the works. It looks bad. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that there's things behind the scene, but this whole thing, it just looks really bad. It, you know, it looks like there's, you know, coercion and secrecy and deceit going on in it. And we can't have things that look at, we have to be above reproach in what we act, how we act and what we're doing. We have to be above reproach so we know that. And so an office there is bad. And then if they do commercial and they have a place for the children, will our children at Cherry Lake Oaks be asked to move? I don't know that answer either. So I'm just saying that if you could just tell them to tear it down, fix it up, clear it out, and give us a chance to look at something nice. They got 200 acres from us, from the City of Groveland. Could they just clean up a few acres right by the road so we have something nice to look at? We don't have to worry about moving our children out of the way so that they can have a place to come and go, and that they would just be able to, to live. So I ask you to vote no, please, on all of these, that we just, we just want you to vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory Ducey. Gregory Ducey.
I'm Gregory Ducey. I live at 139 Harvest Gate Boulevard, Groveland, Florida. I'm a resident of Groveland. I'm happy to be here. I just don't think we should put this building as an office. I don't think we should change the zoning. We should put it, why does he need a 2,900 square foot office for a virtual office works, or warehouse for his automotive thing? He could put that in his home. Statute, Florida statute 559.955 says that you can have a virtual home office, and that was done in July 1, 2021. So that's fairly recent. He could have his office at his home. In fact, he has advantage if he has his office at home for tax purposes. Federal tax codes can have benefit for him there. And what would he do with 2,900 square feet with a single virtual business? Is he going to subdivide it and sell off part of it or rent part of it to another business? Are we going to end up with a Cherry Lake Business Plaza Phase 1? And what's to stop somebody right next to him from saying, I want to put a business in my spot because you did it there? So now we'll have a Phase 2 and a Phase 3, and we'll make this a whole business area. And I don't think it should be. It's labeled residential. It's, if you drive down the road on the same side, within 500 feet of where this is, you'll see a nice orange triangular sign, says residential area. That's got to go away if this becomes a business. I think they should actually just tear it down, flatten it out, let it be nice and beautiful, and put the trees in there, too, because that would make it nice. Because it looks like their trees are going to be on the Palisade side of the business area, not on the street side. At least, that's what I've seen, because they did not go all the way to the lake on their subdivision that they were making. So I would request that you say no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce Parker.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us tonight. And you guys have a tough job. I thought my HOA board meetings were hard. That, those are easy. On behalf of the Palisades community, I'd like to correct the statement that you've either heard or you're going to hear, that it's only $48 per Palisades homeowner to demolish the maintenance building and give the residents of West Apshoa a beautiful view of the Palisades Lake. Our building was constructed in 1991, probably long before most of the people that either or all of the people that live in West Apshoa purchased their property. Their belief is it's $25,000 divided by 521 homeowners equals $48. That's the total cost of uninformed non-residents, with their slogan, shame on Palisades. Palisades' reality is the initial estimate in just demolishing the building was $25,000 to $35,000. They obviously chose the lower, and that was in 2024. The cleanup of the growth and removing the RV, the current buyer already did that and spent $7,000. So if we don't go through with the sale, we're going to spend $7,000 to reimburse the homeowner. We've, have $20,000 currently in legal fees for this process. We spent $3,500 on surveying costs to split this lot out of the pud. And we have paid the City of Groveland $6,150 in application fees to date. So if you look at potentially $38,000 to demolish the building, $7,000 to repay the buyer, $20,000 in legal fees, $3,500 in surveying costs, and another one, $6,150 in application fees for nothing, plus the loss of the sale of the building, which is $150,000. We are talking closer to $250,000 to the community, which is $480 per resident. Is it fair that people outside of Palisades to even ask this so they can have a better view of our lake? If people want that view, they could simply buy a piece of property in Palisades. It's open. We're welcome. The sale of this property will clean up the property, fix the fence, repair the building with a new roof, windows, doors, paint, landscaping, and resolve all the current code issues, and maintain the property going forward. It's a single office use Monday through Friday. Also, this sale will have much less impact on traffic in the area than the thousands of new homes that are being built on Wilson Lake, or the piece of property directly across the street that got a zoning change five years ago to allow five rental properties on his property, who now has seven or eight. As property owners, the Palisades community has the right to divide, sell, build, and improve our property. We also have an obligation to maintain the property. And the community voted overwhelmingly, 299 to 7, that selling the property to the proper buyer was the best way to accomplish that obligation. Palisades is a great community to live in, and we care. I don't know if you saw this, Reader's Choice, 56,000 votes cast, best neighborhood, Palisades. Just in closing, I want to thank you guys. I appreciate you listening to us. I appreciate the relationship that we have had over the last few years, and I hope it continues going down the road. Thank you.
Marion Case. A little shorter. Marion Case, 10536 Spring Lake Drive. Most of what I was going to say has already been said, but I think a couple points that have not been made is the fact that if you tear down the building, you're contributing to mort free in the landfill. Plus, you don't know what sort of asbestos or whatever's in the building that's going to require remediation. And it's not just tearing down the building. It's tearing up the parking lot as well as re-landscaping, and then we have to maintain it. As we said, we already have 250 acres. We pay over $200,000 in fees to keep it up, and this would just add to our fees. Plus, it would lower the property value. Most of the people that were interested in purchasing that property wanted the building as part of that. The other thing is it, the benefit to the community is the fact that local trades would be brought in to clean up the building, to put in a new roof, to paint it, to clean it. So you're generating revenue for local tradespeople, as well as the fact for the City of Groveland, it costs money to pull permits to do the renovations, as well as hooking up to the water and sewer. And it wouldn't take that much. It wouldn't impact your sewer plants, but. And finally, if it's no longer part of the HOA, you can collect property taxes on the building as well. So, and the only other point I would make is, as Bruce said, it was built in 1991. It was built even before any of the homes in Palisades were built. And it used to be a very noisy and busy building, as you can imagine, 6 o'clock in the morning. You had the trucks in there. You had the lawnmowers going and everything else. So putting in an office building would be a much quieter business than what was in there before. So we'd like to thank you for your support, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
However, he is against ordinance 2025-11 and 2025-12.
Thank you, Michael J. Cox.
Those are all the comments for that particular ordinance. That is for, the rest of them are for rezoning, for the next ordinance. Yes, the next ordinance, you will be speaking. You're Ellen Joyce, right? Yes. You have the subject as Palisades rezoning, which is the upcoming ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I suggest, since the staff gave the presentation on all three, you just have comments on all three?
Yeah, because we just bring them back. Yeah, let's move ahead. That's a good resolution. Thank you.
Ellen Joyce, address protected. Mr. Mayor, I gave what you had said earlier, that in writing to Tim Aslow and the city manager. I met with him, full berm, full landscaping across, so we don't see it. Move an easement over to the gate entryway and let him go in through that way. Manager told me through an email that he met with Palisades, and they rejected that. So I did propose that. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Palisades has 522 beautiful homes and is full of good people, affluent, smart, powerful people. And they hired the best, Brett Jones. He's great, top-notch, and he works very close with the city. And we know, on our side, we need a miracle from God to stop this. We know that. A little background, across the street from this is the lot that they're talking about. It was zoned one, it was zoned rural for one acre. And several years ago, a businessman went to Groveland and said, we want, I'm sorry, a businessman went to Groveland and said, I want to change this to make this where I can put rentals on here. And Groveland allowed him to do it. They switched it from rural to multi-unit, five units on that, on that location. And he did that, and two years later, he sold it for over $1 million. And he said, bye, I got my money. I'm out of here. Since that time, there's been eight units rented. Two of them are travel trailers. The city knows about it. I've been to them, meetings with them. I've sent them in writing. I've called them. To this day, they got eight units they're rented, and it's only for five units. And that's why we look at what's here at the maintenance shed and say, you know what? There's no guarantee that that's going to be fixed. For five years, they've owned it. For five years, we've looked at this while they've owned it. For five years, they had taken and built $1 million into their clubhouse, but we For five years, they had taken and built $1 million into their clubhouse, but we had to look at this while their clubhouse was number one. And we know that it's been in violation of code for five years, and Groveland didn't do anything. I started calling Groveland and saying, what are you going to do? So back in May, they gave me a letter saying, you got until June of 2024 to fix this up by mowing the grass, picking up the trash, and removing the abandoned RV trailer. Pretty simple stuff, mow the grass, pick up the trash, remove the trailer. Well, a month went by, and they said, if you don't do it within 30 days, you're going to get $250 a day fine. They didn't get fined. A month went by, two months, three months, more than, 10 months went by, and there was no fine. Then I found out through their minutes that they had an agreement with the city administration, no fines would be had as long as they were on this road. It'd be nice if they would have told me, and it would have saved me a lot of headache and meeting with them, and then going as a special witness to the special master to try to, you know, enforce it. Bottom line is, my prayer is that you will reject this. Where you currently live, would you let your home look like this for five years that you owned, and have your neighbors look at it? Would you spend $1 million to fix up your clubhouse in your backyard while your neighbors looked at this? Would you sell your problem to a new buyer and say, make sure we don't see it from over here, make sure this is up high in the back so we don't see it, and make sure you don't have entrance into Palisades? Would you push rezoning on your neighbor when you know that Groveland's rezoning on this area right here? It just doesn't exist, Groveland's enforcement doesn't exist for us right here. It doesn't exist for us. Palisades asked you to work with them to save them from rezoning and development so they could save their 200 acres. And yet they turn around and try to push that same thing, rezoning on us. I don't get it. I really don't. They're good people. I'm not saying they're bad people, but why? I can't imagine doing that if I was in that situation. And there is not a single resident in Groveland that I know of that supports Palisades' request. They don't live in Groveland. They're strong advocates, they're powerful people, and they have Brett Jones who knows everyone and everything, and that's great, but this is not good for Groveland. It's not good for us. I'm begging you to please understand our side and really dig deep and say, would you have done this to your neighbor for five years? Would you have done that? And it makes no sense to me. How much is the gallon of paint to at least paint that? It's ridiculous. Please understand our side. Groveland does not benefit from this, and I pray that you stop powerful Palisades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she's coming up. Can I ask a question, Mr. Maslow and Mr. City Manager? Right now, we're just considering the rezoning and kind of annexing this in, right? If we don't do this, we have no control over what's going on. It remains in Lake County jurisdiction, and we can't do anything about it, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's technically already annexed. The two map amendments are on the future land use map and then the rezoning. So again, this property is already annexed into the city.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Christine Loudon. I live in 157 Harvest Gate Boulevard in Groveland, and that's part of Cherry Lake Oaks subdivision. In essence, I live across the street from where this building is. I have some concerns. It mentions the size of the building, and it's going to be internet use, but how many employees are there? No, there's no commercial vehicles going in and out, but how many employees are going to be going in and out? Obviously, there's got to be more people using that than just one person. We have a huge influx of traffic at this point between all of the subdivisions that are being built on Wilson Road. We see a lot of new traffic cutting through because of the Hancock Road Turnpike Exit. They come through Valley Oak Subdivision, and then they turn down Jalomy Road, or they continue straight down Cherry Lake Road. If I'm coming to my home and I'm coming in off of 27, I turn on the CVS and then come up to Jalomy, there is a hill just at the top of Oak Valley when you're coming toward Jalomy Road, and there's a hill on Cherry Lake coming toward Jalomy Road. If you have employees that are leaving their place, it's going to be during rush hour, whether it be in the morning or at night. And right now, it's kind of crazy to pull out from Jalomy Road on Cherry Lake, whether you're going into Oak Valley or you're going down Cherry Lake. If this could, my other concern is it is a residential zoning currently. Why not sell that property to somebody that wants a beautiful lake view? It will fit into the neighborhood. You're not changing the zoning, you're not breaking the zoning. There's another parcel adjacent to it. Why are we starting to put businesses on Cherry Lake Road? It doesn't fit the community. And I have time left, but I think I've said everything that I need to say, other than the fact, I hope you all think about this, and would you want to live in a place that has a business and you're in a nice residential area? There's a lot of school buses now, there's a new school on Wilson Lake, those school buses will be traveling on Cherry Lake as well. So this should all be considered for the safety of the kids, the safety of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 151 Harvest Gate Boulevard, almost directly across from this property, and I worked for Palm Beach County for 20 years as a project manager. I had to deal with this all the time, and this is a very bad idea. You want to open up the door to let more commercial into a residential area. That's, you look at, there's hundreds of homes in this area, and every time you let the commercial in there, there's no stopping them. You say he's only going to use it for internet, but yet that building's way too big for that kind of approach. And when those garage doors are closed, and he can put cars in there, he can work on them, he can do anything. He can rent out space as long as the garage door is closed. This is a bad idea. Palisades, they don't live in Groveland, they don't pay taxes in Groveland except for this little piece of land. All they're out for is to make money. This is wrong. This needs to be looked at better. And once you open the door, the traffic is, I built my house there eight years ago, the traffic is so bad now from all the new homes. Okay, there's progress, but you're going to get to the point that a two-lane road is not going to sustain this. There are bus stops right there, and there is an existing road from that building over to Palisades. They used it for years to get over there and do their work. There are alternatives. I think you either need, and that property is condemned, needs to be tore down now, not a year and a half from now. You have hundreds of residents, children, and older kids walking up and down that road. It's just a bad place to hang out. You need to have it torn down, and then give yourself time to look at some alternatives to this process. They're just trying to make money, that's all they're trying to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That's all public comment. Mr. Redzik, would you like to?
I have a question. First off, I'm really happy to hear that you're held in such high esteem.
Thank you. That's the nicest compliment ever said about me in public, so thank you for that sincerely.
I know that we're going to be talking about it in a couple of weeks, but do you have any idea what type of a professional office is going to be and how many employees potentially are going to be there?
Sure. This is something that we, and there was a reference to the comment in P&amp;Z, and the context of that is, why did you ask for residential with a special exception? And it was because that was the narrowest way to allow for the specific use, which is, it's being purchased by someone that wants to establish their license there. And there was a man that was right, that referenced the COVID statute, if you will, in 2021. Legislature said, you can have home businesses, and that comes from a case out of Delaney Park in Orlando, where a lady was trying to have a baker in her house. Anyways, point is, to have the type of license he has, you can't have it in a home business. You have to have certain elements. One of them is it has to be an office outside of your home. It needs to have a fence around it, and it needs to have a minimum of two parking spaces. You don't ever have to use any of those things, they're just statutory requirements. So that's the impetus for the person, it's a man, the man that wants to buy it. So it's to put his, it's hang his shingles, so to speak, to put his license on the wall with the state of Florida. His business is, he is a trucking broker. He doesn't take possession of trucks. He buys trucks, I don't know where from, I'm getting into speculative territory, but he buys it from somebody, probably banks that repo them, I guess, and matches as much people want to buy them. It's not an internet business, that sounds like a cyber, it's not an internet business inasmuch as he's not some kind of computer programmer person. It's a classic thing that you would do in an office, like I sit in the office all day. And as far as I know, there's only one person, it's a one-man show. So there were some, I think, valid points about, oh, are people going to be coming in all day? And I think it's like a one person going there, maybe two. There's no retail, there will never be a customer that goes there, all that stuff. So I think that's all legitimate concern, but.
So let's talk about the garage doors or whatever the case may be, and the use for that other area of the building. Does the special exception and professional office building, does that prohibit anything else from going on behind those garage doors? Which of course, I understand people can get around it, but from a legal perspective, is he limited to, again, a broker of trucks and not other trucks or otherwise being allowed overnight in the garage area or otherwise?
To me, that doesn't sound like a professional office use, so I don't see how that would be compliant without looking at how that's defined in the city's code.
Okay. And Anita or Mr. Maslow, do we have anything currently written into this agreement that basically says that, you know, tractor trailers or cabs or whatever are not allowed on the property? Or is that part of the homeowners association's PUD? Is that still going to be in their PUD? That's actually being split out, isn't it?
We have it as a condition under the special exception.
Okay.
In terms of not having outdoor storage or vehicle parking.
Okay. All right. I have got the questions answered that I wanted. So it's a one-man shop, he's truck brokering on the internet, needs to do so in order to satisfy his license and otherwise, and that's why he's not doing it out of his house, because he needs to be specific.
Yeah, and it's an investment, it's a win-win. The person does live in the neighborhood, so he's improving that, you know, so he cares more about it than just the investment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy Jo?
Mr. Maslow, a question for you. This side's generally saying they want the thing torn down. Palisades is saying that's not an option. If they keep it, they intend to turn it into a, like, toy storage unit essentially for, like, RVs and jet skis and whatever else they can't park in their neighborhood. Would they be within code to do that?
I don't believe the PUD currently allows for it to be used as a maintenance operation. So if they had exorbitant amount of outdoor storage, I don't think that would, jet skis and things of that nature.
Assuming it would fit inside the garages that are there, though.
If it fit within the garages and it was a renovated facility, that would likely mean code.
Okay. It sounds like we're choosing from some lesser of two evils.
And there's an interesting, like, housekeeping thing, and Tim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but like, normally when annexations come in front of this council, you'll have an annexation, and your staff likes to run it, and I think the best way, which is your annexation, your comp plan, and then your rezoning, you handle all things, one, two, three, usually concurrently. When this was annexed, the comp plan and the zoning, which wasn't established because there was a lot of things going on at the time. So this is a little bit of that is housekeeping, so to speak, like establishing the actual Groveland comp plan codification and the Groveland zoning, because right now, it's still Lake County. I think that also went to the mayor's question, like, it's already annexed, but it's actually incomplete.
If I could just add to that, if we brought an annexation application to y'all today, there would always be two additional items that go with that, both for the map changes for the future land use and also the rezoning. Our approach is to make sure you achieve all three at the same time.
When was this annexed in?
2019?
19, 20, or 21, right around there. Time's going by fast, a little did I get?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. White?
Just very quickly, just for clarity, I think Ms. Loudon, I think you mentioned something about the new school and school buses. The new school is a walking and bike-riding school. Forty percent of the students will be traveling to school that way. The rest is parental drop-off, and they've contracted with a small company to help bring kids to the school, so you won't see an increase in bus traffic. I have had this discussion with several people since we first went to the first Palisades meeting about the traffic issues on Cherry Lake Park. I don't want to drill down into it tonight, but the light at 27 and Wilson Lake will be going in in the approximate September timeframe. I've asked TJ Fish, I don't know if he's already left, we already do traffic studies, and the traffic study for the city of Groveland has been done already by Lake County. So after that light goes in on 27, I've asked TJ if it's possible that we can get a traffic study done on Cherry Lake Road down past that area to see what difference may, that light may make, because a lot of people will then go out to the light to go south. I myself come down, use Cherry Lake Road to Jalomy to go south, so I don't have to go out against a light. It may not make you any happier about the situation, but I do want you to know that I've been taking kind of a deep dive look at that, so we'll know what that presents probably a month or so after the light goes in. But I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if that gives you any comfort, but I hope that will help you feel a little bit better, at least about the school buses. Thank you.
On a scale of zero to 100%, what percent could there be possibly to have any more commercial put in there besides that building?
Zero without coming in front of this body again. Zero.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad you cleared up about Lake County, because I was wondering what that was all about. I have no further questions but a statement that really, when you guys come back, just say that you took a look at letting the traffic go back through that old road that's there rather than come out. And I'm not concerned about anybody in a small car but a FedEx or a UPS or somebody with a truck. It's pretty scary there now, and if we put those trees up, it's going to be even more. So from a safety standpoint, and we have all the players right here that can take a look at it, so it'd be great to see if we can take a look at it.
I will.
I have no more questions. We have no more, we did public discussion. Let's go ahead and call for the. Let's go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. Approved. Okay, that concludes new business.
That was the future land use map. We should also have a reading on the rezoning.
All right, I lumped them all together, I apologize. So we have 2025-12, Palisades rezoning, first reading. Read the ordinance, please.
Your mic's not working.
City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida, to change the zoning from Lake County PUD to City of Groveland Low Density Residential for the herein described property owned by Palisades Homeowners, Inc. and located on Cherry Lake Road, Groveland, Florida, lying south of intersection of Cherry Lake Road and west of Apportant Road, directing the city manager to amend zoning map as herein provided after the passage of this ordinance, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept 2025-12?
Some moved.
Have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I think we had all discussion from the previous item.
Thank you. Okay, we had public discussion on this item, so go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. Concludes new business. Let's go move on to public comment.
Tim Lauks?
No, I don't think they do.
Tim Lauks?
Tim Lauks is not here.
Thanks, Helfrich.
He's gone.
Jen Esterich.
Jen Esterich, my address is protected. So I've got some notes that I jotted down, because I'm likely to get my feelings into felonies here tonight. So why is my address protected? Many of these people saw my husband actually in the back. He's the K-9 officer for the city of Groveland. So with that, Florida Statute 1190714B, while it doesn't make it a criminal penalty by itself, if a public official or the employee knowingly releases the public information, it could lead to disciplinary and civil consequences. So that means I got you civilly now. Also, Florida Statute 8175659, which is the Florida Anti-Doxing Law Enforcement, which was enacted in 2021. It is a crime to electronically publish or disseminate personal identification information of someone, such as their address and phone number, with the intent to harm, intimidate, threaten, or harass. And that's for law enforcement and their families. So, did Ms. Fike do this? No, Ms. Fike is not the one that sent the email. But Bruce did. So who is Bruce Smith? Well, according to some reports, it's either Ms. Fike is going around and saying that he's not on her campaign, or it was that there was a misunderstanding with Mr. Hein. But we do know that Bruce Smith calls Ms. Judith Mama J. And that they go back really far. This is from December 11th of 2012. So Mr. Bruce was also one of the first people to jump, to defend Ms. Fike with her tweets. Okay, that's cool, whatever. When, if, I'm sure if I ever got in trouble...
Ms. Esterich, just...
Yes, sir. I'm sure that if I ever got in trouble, my daughter, right there, who works for Lake County Sheriff's Office, another one that she doxed, and my son, they would jump without hesitation to back me up, right? Okay. So Bruce sends an email, I have the email here. So Bruce sends an email trying to claim that Amy knew about all the tweets prior to June 30th. Amy has had numerous conversations with me, and has said that she never saw the tweets, she never got the package, she didn't get the package before June 30th. She never had it, okay? So Ms. Fike is pushing around this narrative that she was suspended over the tweets. It had nothing to do with the tweets. Go listen to the audio. It had everything to do with the fact that she lied to the public and then used her position to get the IT involved. That's what the suspension was voted on. So the vote was not based on the tweets. It was voted on the information that was presented at the meeting at the time. And if anything, Amy's the only one that played nice that night. She kept asking Anita, are we allowed to do this? Are we allowed to do this? I think she asked three times that night. So for Bruce to come after me and put my home address out there, who else did he send it to? We know that he sent it out to the Clermont Sun, did he send it out to anybody else? So instead of saying, you know what, you guys, that was an accident. My bad, I didn't realize that it was on the Clermont police report. Instead, he doubles down. Yep, I absolutely did do that. Why don't you just give me who you gave it to, so I can go do damage control and save my children? That's the issue. You put my children in danger. Raznick, I don't care at this point.
You don't care about it?
No, I don't care right now. She put my children in danger. What part of that are we misunderstanding?
Ms. Esterich, please, decorum, please.
Yes. So Jenny, would you like to see some of these? Do you want these for the record? Because we also have one where Ms. Fike liked the comment that said that he put the families in danger. And I have those screenshots, or were those manipulated too? Because we verified it just before we came in today. Here, it's right here, would you like to see? Would you like me to pull it up on my phone for you? Do you need those? Yeah, cool, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the public comment. We'll move on then to the board reports, the council reports, please. We'll start with Ms. Fike.
Thank you, thank you. Anita, I have a quick question for you, before I proceed with my director's report. Who's responsible for redacting information on a public information request?
In the city, if the city gets a public records request, then it goes through the clerk's office, sometimes my office, to review for redactions.
So if that was released from the city of Clermont, they should have redacted it, I take that?
I can't speak to that.
Okay. So, once something is requested and it's received, does the requestor have any responsibility after receiving the information to discern what should be redacted if it wasn't?
I can't speak to that as to a public, I can't speak to that as to a private citizen.
Okay, okay. All right, moving on, I'll talk about my director's report. Okay, so, last Wednesday was the last Wacky Wednesday held at Cherry Lake Park. I'm happy to say it actually slid down a slippy slide, was fun. On the 27th, I met with Adnalee, she goes by Addie, easier to say, Ramos Krebs, the program director from the Emergency Department of UF Health, University of Florida Health of Central Florida. They're interested in a forward-looking partnership with Groveland. I think, Mayor, you've met with her before. There's plans to coordinate a VIP event with the council, business leaders and UF Health. I've spoken to Mike Hein about it, I think he's got Ashley engaged in looking into that. We did Christmas in July with Building Blocks, got to meet Koah, or Coda, I misspelled it, sorry. That little fluffy dog, he's not in the pictures, but it's the one that rides around in a little red cart. And then we did backpack setup for the Hope International, at Hope International for the backpack giveaway. On the 26th, we did do the backpack back-to-school event at Hope International. It was great, it was well-received, just a great event, had a lot of fun. On the 27th, which was that Sunday, I went to the performance ski and surf gravel tour at Lake David. Great to see such talented individuals, it was an interesting event. There's a couple picture, at least one picture on there, I see. Went to the Groveland Fire Department's end of season summer bash, another hot and fun day. The kiddos and parents alike love the shower from the fire hose. And I'm gonna apologize for all the typos on this for you, Jenny, I think you'll figure it out. On the 31st, I went to the South Lake Chamber of Commerce Biz After Hours. It was a good event at McGruder Laser Vision in Clermont. Well-attended always, and it was fun to spend time with Tim Murray and his first lady, Cassie Murray, from Clermont, had a good time. We went to the robotics information meeting on the 1st. The team is gearing up for another great season. They had an informational open house on Friday, and they continue to look for sponsors if anybody's interested. You could probably either reach out to Ashley or follow up with them on their Facebook page. And then on the 2nd was the Cherry Lake Prep Carnival. Super busy day, lots of great vendors supporting the event. Amazing how many families braved the heat to participate, and it was indeed very hot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Radzick.
Real short, I attended the backpacks event a couple weeks ago. It was pretty well-attended, although we still had quite a few left over. My next question is actually probably for Anita Drossy Carver. I have a couple of things that I am working on that I want to see on an agenda. How do I go about that?
To have an item placed on an agenda, the council have to get, you have to get three other council members to agree to place an item on the agenda. That's what your code says.
In this consensus, I'm sorry, in my board member reports?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it would go on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carroll?
This week, I attended several events, the fire truck event, which my kids always love, and the backpack event. I'd also like to mention that state statute actually states that anyone who knowingly disseminates a law enforcement officer's address is guilty of a crime. And basic human decency dictates that you don't endanger other people's children. And if it's an accident, you say, hey, that was an accident. I didn't realize, I'm so sorry. This is the other people I sent it to. So you can get ahead of that and do damage control. The only reason you don't do that is if you don't care. And anyone who doesn't care about the safety of a kid, I don't have any room for, and neither should anyone else. They shouldn't be allowed to breathe air.
Vice Mayor?
I attended Christmas in July at Building Blocks. Also, went to the robotics event. And that's my report.
Thank you.
And mine is as short as well. First, I'd like to ask and let the council know that I will not be at the next meeting in like an excused absence. I promised my lovely bride of 50 years on our anniversary, we'd be in fraud. So we're gonna spend our 50th anniversary over there, and I'm sorry I'll miss the next one, but I do value my life, and I won't cancel that. And besides that, I would just ask everybody to dial it down a little bit. There is a lot of proof, if people really wanna know what's going on, go back to July 7th, on our July 7th meeting, go to July 21st. Lot of stuff going around about who's costing who money. Just take a look at where the whole thing lies, and who needs to get back with us from their attorney to prevent us from having to spend money on any kind of thing. So please, that's all I can say. I don't wanna stir this up. It's up to us as the public to be informed and engaged. And informed and engaged, go on those, go on our site. We did a very good thing when we got these cameras put in. There's no way to fool the camera, once it's done. Please review it and make up your own minds. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I actually have a question about a report that we haven't heard in a while. You're on the MPO?
The what now?
The MPO.
MPO?
Yeah.
Well, the MPO, we did give a report, then we got moved up to third, then we got moved back to fourth, and on the 19 project.
Okay.
But other than that, the other stuff is on. But matter of fact, I didn't hear about the fourth from MPO. I heard about it in another meeting, it moved down one.
Okay, thank you.
So. So that concludes my report. Mr. City Manager? Attorney? Seeing no other reports, meeting adjourned.